Thank you very much.
Good evening. Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to just remind city council to we will abide by rules of order procedure and our code of ethics. And it also remind the public that there is a public comment section session, both at the beginning and the end of the meeting. I have a few people signed up. That is your opportunity to speak. If you feel the need to talk about any issue, any counselor outside of those public comments, I ask you not to do it at this meeting and to do it outside of this meeting. Thank you very much. So we will call the meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge allegiance to the flag. Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Counselor Noon, Counselor Gallinaze.
Here.
Counselor Burrow.
Here.
Counselor Peeler. Counselor Regan.
Here.
Counselor Salamandra. Counselor Pruitt. Mayor Valentino.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here.
Okay. Next, we have a proclamation for the fire chief Bruce Moore presented by Counselor Gallinaze.
Want me to just stand up and do it?
Yeah, as long as you're near our microphone, that's what matters, so. Counselor Gallinaze, can we just get you by a microphone? There you go. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Tonight, I feel honored and privileged to be presenting a proclamation to the late Bruce Moore, who was fire chief and a member of the fire districts in Geneva for over 50 years. The proclamation reads, whereas the city of Geneva recently lost a valued member and friend on September 30th, 2021, with the death of retired Fire Chief Bruce Moore, a leader of exemplary member of our community and fire department with an extensive and accomplished service record. And whereas Bruce joined the Hydrant Holes Fire Department January 6, 1969, as a volunteer firefighter. He went on to become commissioner in January 1988 and assistant fire chief December 1990. He was also a member and served on the committee of the Finger Lakes Stucks Unlimited, Geneva Chapter, National Wild Turkey Federation, and the New York State Association of Fire Chiefs. And whereas, after over 30 years working in the print shop at the New York State Agricultural Experiment Station, he chose to come out of retirement and accept the position of fire chief for the city to keep the department moving forward. Bruce became the fourth career fire chief for the City of Geneva Fire Department on March 18th, 2005, until his retirement in 2011. And whereas, he will be remembered as well respected individual who was dedicated to his family and friends, as well as a role model for anyone who was fortunate enough to know him. Bruce earned the respect and admiration of his fellow firefighters and all who think back on his life and how he affected them in a positive way. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I Frank Gallinaze, by virtue of authority vested in me as counselor-at-large of the City of Geneva, do hereby issue the proclamation in the memory of Fire Chief Bruce Moore to celebrate his legacy and extend our sincere appreciation to his family for supporting him throughout his tenure with the City of Geneva Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gallinaze. Thank you, Bruce Moore, for all the efforts you put towards our city. We have a lengthy agenda tonight, so I'm going to ask counselors to stay the task and stay focused on the agenda. Counselor Cameron would like to make a motion, I believe, on the agenda, so.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. What I'd like is, given the intense interest of the city and the citizens to of the discussion of the IDA and the pilot for the Legion project, I'd like to place this on the agenda for later in the when it's when we can put it in there, but I would like to have counsel, if possible, weigh in on that. It's a very important decision. And it's being followed very closely by all the citizens in Geneva, and it has a significant impact on the taxpayers of the city.
So we have a motion. We have a second by Counselor Salamandra. This has to be a majority vote to put it on the agenda. Any discussion? Counselor Peeler?
This is a discussion topic that you'd like to have?
Well, I it could result in me making a motion to either support or or not support the pilot as as written at this time. And that would help and give provide guidance to the IDA who have a very important decision to make. And so knowing that council has some views on that might be helpful to them. We were not supposed to talk to them individually or, you know, express our individual opinions directly to them or have side conversations. So we have to do this in public if we want to express our concerns. And there were a number of counselors at the meeting last night. There was a public hearing and about 10 people spoke. And Tom Burrow and I spoke. Jan attended. So we spoke as private citizens, but I think it makes some so it's we can't represent the city council as going to that meeting. And we can express our opinions as, like I said, private citizens or individual counselors, but we can't suggest that those comments that we made are a reflection of overall council. So what I'd like to see is council have a discussion and evoke yea or nay on whether we support the pilot or not.
So the motion on the floor is for a discussion. My concern is not only we can provide input as an individual citizen, but not as a city counselor and not as a council as whole. So there are some legalities to this, and I don't want to walk that fine line of breaking those legalities and doing adversely influencing in one direction or another the operations of an independent board. That's critical for us. So we have a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on adding a discussion of the IDA pilot to the agenda.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamandra?
Aye.
Counselor Pruitt? Counselor Gallinaze?
Nay.
Counselor Burrow?
Nay.
Counselor Peeler?
Nay.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Nay.
Motion defeated.
Okay, moving on to the public hearing. We have a public hearing for the renewal of the electric franchise within the state of New York. Or excuse me, with the state, New York State Electric and Gas Corporation. Does anybody want to speak at the public hearing about that issue? Okay, we will close that public hearing. Next is the foundry update by our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the New York State DEC's remediation update. For the remedial design, structural inspections were conducted at additional properties located south of Lewis Street, along Genesee Street, Geneva Street, and Tilden Street. Remediation of these properties is expected to occur in 2022 and 2023. Progress continued on remedial design plans for the group of properties located north of Middle Street, along the east side of Exchange Street and the west side of Wadsworth Street. Remediation of these properties is expected to occur in 2022. Progress resumed our remedial design plans for Genesee Park based on input received from the city manager regarding planned changes and improvements to the park after remediation. New York State DEC's engineering contractor will continue to coordinate with the city as plans are further developed. Remediation of the park is expected to occur in fall 2022. For the remedial construction, excavation and backfilling were completed within the block of 11 properties located in the area bounded by Genesee Street, State Street, and Clinton Street. Restoration is substantially complete on this block. Additional fencing will continue to be installed this month, and remaining plants and trees will be placed in 2022. Replacement plants and trees were installed on the block of properties west of Genesee Park that include addresses on Goodell Terrace, Genesee Street, and Lewis Street. Additional plantings will be installed in spring 2022. The remaining replacement plants and trees were planted at loop properties along Lewis Street, east of Genesee Park. And other restoration items were addressed throughout the areas remediated in 2021. New York State DEC's construction contractor has begun shutting down for the winter. The 2022 construction season likely will begin in March or April 2022, depending on the weather. Work in 2022 is expected to begin at six properties located south of Middle Street between Exchange Street and Wadsworth Street. On the city side, as noted above for Genesee Park, staff did meet with the New York State DEC's team to discuss logistics for the remediation plans as well as restoration plans and next steps. On the resident outreach, a reminder that the Food Link curb side's mobile market voucher program is still available through the winter. The December schedule is as follows. Salvation Army, 41 North Street, 11:15 a.m. to 12:15 p.m., and this is on Fridays. Then moves to Lyceum Heights Apartments at 150 Lyceum Street, 115 to 215, then Elm Crest Apartments at 99 Lewis Street from 2:30 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. And if folks are waiting for remediation, they can obtain the vouchers, but anybody can go and purchase fresh fruits and vegetables from the curb side program. And again, the Dog Park voucher program is also available for residents waiting for remediation. That's the city clerk's office at City Hall to sign up. And lastly, just a contact reminder, our city liaison is Liz Toner. That's e-toner@genova.ny.us or 315-828-6585. And any questions to the remedial design team, that is going to Bob Gibson at Ecology and Environment, and his email is r.gibson@ene.com. And these will be up on the website as well as past ones, too. You can search Foundry Update.
Thank you very much. Next, we have two presentations on our agenda. The first presentation is the 2020 Audit Overview and Water and Sewer Fund Replenishment Plans.
Thank you, Mayor. So we wanted to give a little overview of our 2020 financial audit. As a municipality, it's required that we complete one of these every year through a third-party firm. We did that, and everything came out great. So I'll go into a little more detail than that as we move forward, but overall, through a very tricky year, we ended better than expected in dealing with a pandemic for our first time. So with that being said, we did it. We had no issues with accounting practices. Management reporting consistent with auditor's findings. As an accounting department or a finance department, we're very particular and very high on completeness and accuracy. And those are the two things that really accountants are judged the most on. And those things from our department came out really well in this in this financial year. And that makes the audit go a lot smoother because the information we're providing matches what the auditors are providing. And so we know throughout the year what we're reporting is accurate. So that being said, no uncorrected misstatements, and all reporting requirements have been satisfied at the state level. So starting in the general fund, we were under budget in revenues by a little over $400,000. A lot of that had to do with COVID. All of it almost was due to COVID. So every year, there's a few things that come in over budget, under budget. But really, in 2020, we had not planned for a pandemic, and we were hit with one, and so we had to adjust. And our revenues came in under budget. However, our expenses came in under budget as well, which is we have a little bit more say in what happens with those. So we were we were proud of that. It did leave us with a difference or a deficit of just around $250,000. But we did allocate some of the American Rescue Plan Act funds to cover the revenues from 2020 in the general fund. So we will end up showing a surplus once everything kind of washes out. From a fund balance standpoint, we want to have a fund balance in the general fund of between 12% and 15% of our total expenses. So what that means is our budget is $17 million and our fund balance is 1.9 million. We're in pretty good shape. The reason for that is you don't want to have, you don't want to be hit with something like a pandemic or some kind of emergency and not have anything in the bank. So similar in your in your personal financial world of having a savings account that you can dip into when times are tight or when you're faced with some kind of emergency. So at the end of 2020, the unassigned fund balance and unassigned is basically, it's not for any specific purpose. So the unassigned fund balance was a little over 1.9 million, resulting in 11.83% of the total budget. So we're right there at the 12%. We'd like to be on the higher end or even over that range. But we do see a pretty positive 2021, and we are projecting that we'll have a surplus in the general fund in the current year and get back into that 12% to 15% fund balance range. On the water fund, not as good of news. The revenues were under quite a bit. A good portion of this was due to COVID, and, you know, you may say, well, people were still using water, whether they were home or at work. But when you take things out like restaurants, businesses, you know, the colleges, things like that, where a lot of these sources of water are not being used, it really did take a pretty good hit. Again, we were under in expenses as well, not as much as we would have liked to have been to cover all these revenue shortfalls, but we did come in under budget there, giving us a difference of 419,000, which is a it's a pretty significant deficit in a enterprise fund, which water sewer fund or enterprise funds. So that's concerning for us. And that leads us to our fund balance, which unappropriated fund balance at the end of the of that year was about $33,000. That's under 1% of the total 21 budget, which is which is very concerning. We're going to get into a little bit later in this presentation a replenishment plan. So we do have, we do have a plan to get out of this. But the goal is between 30% and 35%, so we have quite an uphill climb to get there. On the sewer fund side, a pretty good year in sewer, actually. We did have revenues come in under budget, but hardly enough to say so, 50,000. And then expenses came in about 190,000 under budget. So we ended up with a surplus in the sewer fund of around 140, which we were very happy with. It was it's nice to have a surplus every once in a while, and certainly last year was unexpected, but that worked out very nice. Unassigned fund balance in the sewer fund, just over a million, about 21%. So not as bad as the water fund, but still have some work to do. And again, we do have a plan for replenishing that that fund balance. And again, all these, the reason for having a decent-sized fund balance is, you know, there's there's a major issue at the water plant or the wastewater plant, and you want to have money in the bank to be able to fund an emergency quickly, get things repaired. So getting into the water and sewer fund balance replenishment plans for water, current balance I just mentioned, about 33,500. Our goal is to get to around a little over 1.2 million. So we have about 1.2 million to go, obviously. We've got a long way to go for that. So the plan is to now through 2027, the way that it worked out was that we would be going for 1.3 million. Goal to appropriate 175,000 to fund balance each year in the annual budget. And that wouldn't that wouldn't start until 2023 because we obviously just adopted the 2022 budget. In doing this, it most likely will require rate increases or some increases to fees. Obviously, cuts to expenses are also being looked at. And then the the most important thing for me is any fiscal year surpluses that we end up with in the water fund, we would like to then reappropriate back to the fund balance in the next year. So the the long-term plan here, 2021, we have a we have a resolution on the floor later this evening to recalculate our water sewer transfer for the current year and and replenish the water fund and sewer fund a little bit. So that's around 120,000. There were two American Rescue Plan Act projects out of the water fund that were going to be funded, just cash funded. We're going to take those from the ARPA funds instead, and that comes out to 55,000. And then projecting a pretty good surplus this year in water of around 200. I'm hopefully being very conservative on 200, but things look really good there. One of the reasons for that is our 2021 budget is extremely conservative due to COVID and not knowing what was going to happen. So we were very low on revenues, very low on expenses, and and things are playing out better than projected. So I am anticipating around 200,000 there. Hopefully, it's, you know, quite a bit more, and and this plan can be shortened. Yeah, yes. So 2022, the year that's already been budgeted for, another ARPA project that was going to be cash funded will come from there, 55,000. And then fund balance surplus, which we're we're hoping for, we're going to do our best to keep expenses down, and hopefully revenues come in as projected. And then that that surplus that we would have, we would we would put back into the to the fund balance. And then, as I mentioned, the the annual budgeted allocation of 175 from 2023 to 2027, those will be in our proposed budgets. And then the anticipated replenishment balance, when we get to 2027, will be just over our 1.3 million mark, which we will be within range. Now, that's a that's a long ways away, 2027. We've done replenishment plans for fund balances in the past, and we've always gotten there sooner. So I'm not going to guarantee that we do that, but knowing that that's our goal, you know, I can tell you, we'll do our absolute best to get that done in the shortest amount of time possible. So for the sewer fund, there's not as not as much of an uphill climb, about 737,000 as opposed to 1.3 million. So definitely feel more comfortable with this one, but very similar to similar to the water fund fund balance in that you want to appropriate 130,000 a year, starting in 2023 to 2027. Again, may require rate increases, increases to fees, certainly looking at expenses and where we can make cuts. And then the big one is any any surpluses. So similar to 2020, when the sewer fund had a surplus, we would turn around and put that right into the into the fund balance. So what we can do for the current year, as I mentioned, we have the we have the the resolution on the floor later this evening about the transfer to the general fund. That'll save the sewer fund about 115,000, projecting a surplus of around 50,000 this year. And then an ARPA project that was going to be paid cash will be paid through those funds, and that's at 50,000. 2022, any kind of surplus we have, we'll put that back into the fund balance. And then 23 to 27, 130,000 annually in the budget to get us back to that 1.9-ish fund balance. So that's kind of the audit and the the plan moving forward. I think it's a realistic plan. I've talked about it with Sage quite a bit. I think we can get there. And I and I think we're we're as as bad as some of the fund balance numbers look currently, I think we're in a good position to to cure that pretty quickly. I can answer any questions anybody has.
Adam, when you talk about transfer surplus funds, I'm familiar with transferring from general fund, which we're going to do tonight, to those two funds. But if it's a surplus within that fund, is there any action that needs to be taken by council?
Nothing by council. It's strictly an accounting transaction. So, you know, if we planned on a million dollars and a million in revenues, a million in expenses, and we got a million five, then the 500,000 automatically kind of goes into the fund balance. We just have to do we just have to do an accounting journal entry to make that happen.
My compliments to the staff and to the departments for all the efforts for the reduction in expenses. Counselor Gallinaze?
Mine's on.
I'm requesting if you can email us that presentation, please.
Yep, I can do that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Counselor Peeler?
I don't know if it's readily available, but can you include the revenue breakdowns from like where the shortcomings are from?
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
And like including like the air, like the sectors. You said it was like businesses being closed, certain things being closed. I'd like to see I'd like to see some of that.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you.
Counselor Pruitt?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm concerned that it was mentioned that there may be rate increases. And is that anything that's looming at this point in time? And if indeed there is rate increases for five years to be able to increase the balance, will those be rolled back at some future time, do you think?
Well, the the plan in a water and sewer fund is always to cover your expenses, the cover the expense of doing business, right? So if we can find a way to make that more efficient or cheaper, then absolutely, we would want to roll the rates back. It's from a staff perspective, it's our last resort. You know, we want to see what we can do instead of raising rates. It's not something we want to do. You know, unfortunately, our our water and more so our sewer plants are very expensive to run. But we are doing some capital projects that do help with efficiency. So, you know, you may, we may be making a big purchase upfront, but then down the road, it can save us. And so that's where we would where we would look to reduce rates.
That would have been the second part of my question. I know we just put pumps in, which increases our capacity. Is there any chance that we could, so to speak, sell more of our capacity off to some of our neighbors?
Yeah, that is a plan to for for sewer especially, to have kind of a regional sewer authority. So there's surrounding municipalities now, Phelps, the town of Geneva, town of Seneca, town of Waterloo. There's a couple other ones I can't think of right now, but we have the, we will have the capacity, and we have the infrastructure to that other places don't have. And so that is something that if, once we have that capacity, we definitely want to, you know, try to get something for it and while we're helping other municipalities.
And that's nothing we can count on, but it would be gravy if we pull it through, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. But we're not getting the vast benefit.
Right, so if yeah, so if we can't get something on the on the tax side, then certainly to help us cover our sewer costs is yeah.
Counselor Salamandra?
I appreciate all the work that staff has done to come up with a more fair agreement with the town and the places that rely on our services. I'm but just like a quick glance at this, it seems like because we have the services that we give to them, and so we can get stuck holding this bag again, the complete cost. So is there any way to work out like some kind of financial agreement that if we're 400,000 again, that we don't bear that cost alone, since they benefit from us holding the bag?
Yeah, so I believe the agreement that we just re-upped was just a one-year extension. And so we are in negotiations with with the town of Geneva, as well as town of Waterloo and other those surrounding municipalities, as I mentioned, for a regional sewer authority. Those those discussions on the regional haven't, they haven't really kicked off yet, but we we definitely are in discussions with the town of Geneva and looking at things similar to that. So something that kind of helps us So something that kind of um helps us if something goes wrong, right? If, if it turns out that the usage is way down, we're not going to actually save very much on, on the cost, whether usage is up or down. So um working out those details and making sure we have the right thresholds for um extra fees and things like that. So those are things that we're, we're looking at now.
I know it sounds crazy, but that's just something in the future I'm interested in working on is to make those agreements. So I appreciate the work.
Okay, we'll move on to our next presentation, which is the Police Budget Advisory Board, twenty twenty-two budget recommendations. I have Chief Paslakwa and Assistant City Man.
Okay, so um the chief and I are here to do a uh, a brief presentation on the Police Budget Advisory Board. As it relates to the twenty twenty-two budget, um, the see if we can get there. So the, the board was established uh in October of twenty twenty, so October of last year. Board members were appointed um earlier this year in July. Um, the goal was to submit recommendations uh for the twenty twenty-two budget. Um, we, I did, I did talk with the board and um we did talk about how little time that really was to gain a really good understanding of the budget process um and of the police department and still submit recommendations. Um, but we all agreed, myself included, that it was something that could be done. And so um I thought it was um pretty admirable of them to really take all this information, try to learn as much as possible and, you know, make some recommendations. So they did come up with a couple of recommendations, six to be exact, um for twenty twenty-two. And what we'll do is, we'll say what the recommendation was, and then we'll talk about the staff response. So the first recommendation um was to designate police budget funds, about fifty thousand for a police study. Um, this was similar to the study that Counselor Pruitt brought forward several months ago. Uh, and then create a special committee to design the RFP for the study led by the Police Budget Advisory Board. So the response from management, so that would be myself, Sage and the chief, um, and anybody else that needed to be involved with the particular um recommendation. We uh agreed with the recommendation for a police study with the following uh modifications. So we proposed waiting until the scope uh is determined um from the New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services. Uh, they were gonna do pro bono um work for us and then decide what to do for an RFP um with a consultant. And then if additional services are needed, we would propose pulling this money from uh, from our fund balance mid-year. We would come back to city council and do a budget amendment. Um, so Chief, I don't know if you have just a quick update on that, um, on that, that study from the DCJS?
Uh, yeah, so that study has already uh started. They actually, uh, we were talking to them a few months ago. They just came and did their first onsite uh visit with us November tenth. Um, they spent uh most of that day here with us uh on the ground and uh left us with a slew of uh data, information and all sorts of things that they're gonna need preliminarily. So um we have gotten some of that to them. Some of it is more labor-intensive based on our ability to research things based on how much our, our RMS system currently allows us to do. So some of it's more manual-intensive than, you know, say putting in a date range and having someone spit out at you um certain data. Uh, so we've gotten some of that to them. Their timeline from November tenth was, uh, they should have something back to us finished and published uh within six to eight months. Um, so my hope is that by, you know, if we can expedite as much as we can on our end getting them what they need, um, and they're not waiting on us, my hope is that we should have something, I'm hoping by the April or May timeframe if it falls into that. So that's kinda where we're at there. Records management system? Sorry, should have explained that.
Yeah, it, do you want us to be interrupting like this?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Can you just um detail what um they're looking at? And I know it sounds very trivial to say this, but I've seen that figure of fifty thousand escalate. And um the, the actual number that we had, I believe, was really thirty-five. I ju- I just hate to see it constantly inflated, but if you can explain what this, the pro bono study um will be delineating for us, thank you.
Yeah, so it's, it's gonna look at, um, they made it very clear to us when they were here on the ground that they are only looking at facts. Um, there is no persuasion anywhere on the ground here of, you know, we do this and we do that, and nobody has enough time for this. It's based solely upon facts and data. So they're gonna look at things like geographics, they look at population, how much area we cover. They look at post assignments and how we deploy uh shifts or how we break our, our patrol sectors up. Um, they look at annual reports, they've requested, I believe, seven, our, our previous seven reports, um, which contains a ton of information. They've asked for our neighbors and UCR data, which is the reporting system we use to the federal government for crime rates and things like that, um, which gives obviously any municipality or, or village like a crime rate index. Um, so I've gotta go through and get all that stuff for them, which we have. Um, so it, it's a very broad spectrum. What I will say is um, if you're interested in looking at one of these comprehensive studies that they've done, they actually did one for, which I was unaware of, they did one for um Ontario County for the Sheriff's Department back in twenty eighteen. Um, if anybody wants that, or maybe I should just send it to all, um, I do have a copy of that in PDF form that I can forward out.
That went out to them last
Oh, it did.
Four, two weeks ago.
Okay. Um, and that will, that will really give you, you know, it kinda lays out kinda what they're looking at and how they break things down and what the standard is that they're using um for what they believe is the correct amount of coverage and officers per capita and things like that. So I would say take a look at that, and that should give you a better understanding of kinda what they're doing.
And the, the fifty thousand was kinda just the, just an approximate number that, that again, you know, the chief had mentioned April. So hopefully April, May, June, if there are more um, more studies needed or, or additional uh things that need to be done, that's, that's the time that we would come back to city council for the potential uh budget amendment. Okay, so the second recommendation, await the results of the study uh before filling any vacated positions in twenty twenty-two. Um, reduce appropriate police budget lines, training perhaps others by the amount that would be required to recruit and train any additional officers beyond those already in the academy. Um, so the management response was um that we suggested waiting until the study was, uh, till the study recommendations were back uh in order to make that decision that the uh board recommended. So our, our stance on it was, let's keep things going the way we have them now until we have the data to justify making a change. Um, and so um we're hoping, as Chief mentioned, that that's um early spring, that we can do that and then go from there.
Adam, just on that one point.
Yes.
So you're, you're saying wait for the study, so you're not gonna fill a vaca- a, an empty position now?
So what, basically, basically what we're saying is um until the study comes back, let's say somebody leaves or retires in February, we would backfill that position instead of leaving it vacated. Once the study comes back and we know, okay, we have too many officers, we don't have enough officers or whatever the, whatever the recommendations are, then we would implement the new practice.
Okay, but there's, but aren't there vacant positions now?
There are.
So are you, you're, you're, are you backfilling those?
Nope.
No, so you're just, it's like the compliment that is on the ground in the streets now is the one you're living with. And then if they're, one of those people depart, you will vaca-
Yep, just the, just the roster we have, and anything outside of that remains the same.
Thank you.
He is on the roster, yeah. Well, well, no, I'm sorry, no. Si- what were you saying, Sage? Oh, right, not on the he's not budgeted to be. Yeah, I'm sorry, I would, I didn't realize you meant twenty twenty-two. Okay, um, so the third recommendation, the publications advertising line, um hold it at two hundred. Uh, didn't see the need for an increase up to five hundred on this line item. Um, so the response on this is that um there were funds used for local safety campaigns out of here. Don't text and drive, don't drink and drive, Halloween safety, things like that. Um, and over the years, some costs have been paid um from other line items that should have really been allocated to this line item. So this was kinda just a way to um reallocate the funding of where it was supposed to be. Um, so that one's not a, not a huge one. Um, the fourth one authorized the purchase of one vehicle uh instead of two. The new ve- new vehicles were last purchased in twenty nineteen, but the newest additions were added to the fleet this year, being twenty twenty-one. Cost reduction from delaying a vehicle purchase can help defray the costs of a policing study. Uh, the response uh from us on that is that the vehicles were be, are being paid for from the Equipment Reserve Fund, um, which is separate from the general fund. So the, the funds that would be used to purchase the equipment or the vehicle, uh, they couldn't be used for a study. Um, we recommended moving forward with the purchase of both vehicles uh due to the um, due to how far behind we are with equipment replacement plan throughout the city, not just, not just police. The fifth recommendation from the board, um requests review and renegotiation of the scheduling aspects of the union contracts. Um, much of the budget is related to these contracts and scheduling. Our response there was that administrative shifts have occurred in the past year and will work, continue to work with the Chief, Command Staff and Police Officer Union to make adjustments to accommodate the staffing issues. And we are currently in an open negotiation with the um police union now, so those discussions are happening. The sixth and final uh recommendation from the, from the board was to reduce overtime expenses by permitting it for emergencies only. Uh, the management response is that currently overtime is being used for emergency situations or purposes only. Uh, things like unexpected absences, shift coverages, or major crime or police situations um where extra staffing would be required. Um, only exception would be overtime that's requested by a third party for extra security. So sometimes the colleges reach out and request uh extra security. That uh, that cost is then reimbursed back to the city. Uh, moving forward, you know, staff will continue to work with the board. We've, we've met a few times, um, we've started to get on a habit of meeting monthly um on the third Thursday of the month. And um probably in January or February, I'm gonna be doing a condensed version of the Budget Academy that I uh did a few years ago. Um, try to take kind of a two-hour window and condense a lot of the hot topics in there as it relates to police and budgeting. Um, but overall, I think, I think it's a very um interested board and they're, they ask a lot of great questions. And, you know, the timing was, was a little unfortunate for twenty twenty-two, but I think as we get into the twenty twenty-three budget next summer, I think um, you know, they'll have much more thorough recommendations and, and they'll be, they'll understand the process a lot better, um, because they're picking it up very quick now. Um, and just they're a, a good group to work with in, in that aspect. Um, so that is all that I have, if there's anything else you wanna mention, but.
Council Peeler and then Council Salamandra. I'm happy to see that the academies are coming back. Are we gonna have a police and fire academy soon, possibly?
Uh, we did publicize for Citizens Academy this year, and we received one applicant. Um, so it wasn't uh obviously conducive for man hours and resource to, to do it, so.
Is there a, is there a, is, is there like a schedule to rotate those um kind of? This is a follow-up question, uh, to rotate those kind of invitations to do another one or like maybe biannually? We, I understand that one is a cancellation, but if that one is a holdover for like another, like six months later, would, would that one person do it again with another person?
Yeah, so the, the one applicant we have expressed interest when he was told that it wasn't gonna happen, that he would still be interested if we did it again. We most certainly will um put that out there and do it. We, we normally do it during the fall because we're just too taxed during the, the winter, uh, the winter season months. Um, so we do start it in the fall, um, and that's kinda why we do it on that kind of a schedule. So we will do it again, we'll put it out again like we normally do, um, you know, a little bit before this time next year and hope that uh we get some better numbers.
Thank you. Council Salamandra.
Um, I just have a question, and maybe it's for the council and not Adam, but I was under the impression that we supported um the police study that John suggested. So I'm confused, why is staff telling us? No. Do we need to formalize that process? Do you all still support John's study? Do you agree with staff's recommendations? I just think that, the last I knew, the majority of council supported the study that John recommended. And now we're getting a different study, and I'd like to know how that happened. Or if we missed a step to clarify to you our direction.
I, I don't remember us giving specific direction, I remember discussing it.
Okay, so do we need a resolution on the floor to?
For expense, spend the funds, yeah, we would
To spend the funds.
We, we would definitely need a resolution, it'd be a budget amendment, a super majority that would need.
Okay, so do, do we, do we agree with this decision? I think that that's the discussion, not what staff tells us, but what do we as a council decide?
I think you sparked some discussion. Council Galanese, Council Peeler, I don't know if you guys wanna go around the horn?
My opinion on this, from my point of view, is when we uh created the Police Review Board, there was discussion about training, and I believe you, Counselor Salamandra, said that the Department of Justice could do that for free. So I feel as though this is the best route, since we're trying to be fiscally responsible, is to go this route because it doesn't cost us anything. John's idea, not saying I'm for it or against it, but it costs us money, costs the taxpayers money. So why wouldn't we go this route? We can't pick and choose sometimes.
Might as well go, Council Burl, we'll just go around the horn real quick.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I believe when John brought this up, it was in the form of a resolution. And, and my memory is that it did not pass. So um I believe it was a five, four, or six, three, um, it, it did not pass. I believe that this, it was not a discussion, it was in a resolution form. And then it was an option, um, I believe when we were discussing the budget for twenty twenty-two. And I don't believe it, you, it ever came up to add it into the current budget. So that's, that's my recollection, um, Counselor Salamandra, that it failed the first time that it came up. And the, and now at this point, to put it in for twenty twenty-two, like was mentioned, it would um, amending the budget as a super majority vote.
Was that before, I just wanna ask clarifying, was that before or after the work session? I, that's my recollection, and I watched that from home because um there was someone with a fake gun outside the door. But um I mean, I don't think that it was meant for me to know it was fake, but it was fake, and it just seems, you know, I wasn't gonna go. So I watched that at home, and it seemed that there was consensus among the counselors. But maybe I have it wrong.
We can ask a clerk to check.
Yeah, I, I think that was, it was a Jordan Hall meeting. It was not in the council chamber, the gun meeting, yeah.
Council Peeler.
Um, yeah, I have similar approaches as uh Counselor Galanese and Burl. Plus, I'm, I'm not clear on why we're not applauding a pro bono uh service. I mean, one of our responsibilities is the fiscal health of the city, and you can't get much better than free from the DOJ. So um I, I think it's great that they're doing this pro bono, and I hope we can support that because it's, our tax dollars hard at work doing what we want them to do, it's actually government working, so.
My two cents is we're using pro bono for legal support for the PRB. My two cents is we're using pro bono for legal support for the PRB. I think it just aligns with using pro bono for this issue also.
Counselor Cameron?
No, I think, though, that it's a preliminary thing. So, whether... They're going to crunch the numbers, and they're going to do it. They have their way. I'm sure this isn't the first time they've done it. So, they'll crunch all these numbers from the RMS. And then they'll provide some information. And then that would be the appropriate time to consider whether you bring in an outside party. With all those numbers crunched, whatever it is, it's going to cost less if we decide we want somebody to do it. And it would be good to have that information in hand. So, I think it's just step one, step two, and then step three, the conclusions and implementing them. So, at this point, let's see what that says because I think we all can interpret the results of this study that they've initiated with the Department of Criminal Services or whatever. And then we'll see at that point.
And the great example is the Ontario one. Counselor Regan?
Yeah, I don't really have a problem with the whole idea of doing it pro bono. I think the appeal on the study that was presented by Counselor Pruitt, it was, they just seemed like the right kind of group to look at something like this in a way that was completely independent, et cetera, et cetera. And that was appealing, and I'd love to see that happen. But again, as a preliminary step, I'm glad the department is open to having this done. And we'll see where that goes. And, yeah, I'm glad they're looking at it. I think that some important results can come from studying the numbers and the crime. I know that there are a lot of things to be taken into account when you talk about how many police officers you need in a municipality. And hopefully, this will give us some of those answers specific to Geneva.
I mean, I was in favor of John's study. This was a clarifying question to find out because I was under the impression that we had given direction with my input at that meeting. So, I got confused about how we got here. It seemed to be in the same pattern where the council majority is overruled. If that, I'd like to know. Have Lori confirm how this played out. But also, I'm fine with the Department of Justice study. I also don't necessarily trust that that is independent enough. I've been a... I think that the appeal, like Counselor Reagan said, to the study was that it was independent. And I think I support it. And I'm happy to wait until other counselors are more comfortable. I was just under a different impression.
Pruitt, thank you. It was, it's a long meeting, so I don't want to spend much more time on this because I think it's sort of water under the bridge at this point. I have to say that I was gravely disappointed that we couldn't have ratified the proposal that had been put forth. It was a tipping point for me to decide whether to stay or not. And so, it was that important, I think. And I think, as you recall, we did have five of us that were in agreement to do it, but there was also some discussion about getting a better price, which we stopped for. Tom was able to get an additional $5,000 off. We got it down from $50,000 to $35,000, and everybody was more or less arguing over the cost, which is reasonable, as Frank's bringing up here tonight. I think what we never got to was really how to pay for it. And there were two methods. One was to put it into the budget that we just passed, which we didn't move forward to do for a reason. And the other was, as I said then, I would have been willing to pay for it. I thought it was that important to do because it was independent. And I've heard it from a lot of people already. They say they're not going to agree with the independence of something that's already established by the police department, although I think it's a good study, and I'm glad they're doing it. It sort of alleviates that, you know, elephants not guarding the peanuts type thing. So, it would have been nice to do, but to me, it's water under the bridge. I think we've already got a good program going. If that doesn't reveal enough information that's satisfying to people, then we can take another whack at the International Council of City Managers Program. I mean, they've done over 400 of these assessments, perhaps the DOJ has as well. So, really, with a long meeting, I would say it's nice to argue about it, but it was an argument we had before and passed on. And I think they've moved on and done the best job they can in terms of reestablishing it. I do think that there was a lot of discussion over whether we need a study or not. And I'm gratified to the chief that he's allowed at least this study, the one that, I guess, the powers that be felt were more appropriate. So, at least we're getting some sort of study out of it. And the last thing I have to say was, the reason, the only reason we wanted to do this was to try to stop some of the rancor that had been going on for over a year in the city between two political groups, if you will, or two political initiatives. So, we were just looking for a third independent party to come and tell us whatever the story is, and who knows what the story is. So, we were looking for intelligence, and we still are. So, it'll be interesting to see what comes out of this. I'm surprised it takes six or eight months to get results, but I'll look forward to it. I hope I get access to that when it does occur. But I'd say let's move on. It's water under the bridge at this point.
There's a point, Mayor, is a point of clarification. Couple of counselors mentioned the Department of Justice. It's a federal body. The Department of Justice is not undertaking this study. It's the Division of Criminal Justice Services, or DCJS, which is a New York state-run body. Not a federal body, just for clarification.
Okay, we're going to keep moving. Thank you very much for the presentation. Next on our agenda is consideration of meeting minutes. We have to separate them. I need a motion for October 27th and November 3rd, Counselor Cameron. Second by Counselor Peeler. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cameron?
Aye.
Counselor Salamandra?
Aye.
Counselor Pruitt?
I'm sorry, I missed what the call was. It's for what?
This is approval of minutes. For October 22nd and November 3rd.
Yep, I saw that. Aye, thank you.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burrow?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is the November 15th meeting minutes. Counselor Galanese makes a motion, seconded by Counselor Regan. Clerk, please call the roll.
I did.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burrow?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Cameron?
Aye.
Counselor Salamandra?
Aye.
Counselor Pruitt?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Abstain.
Motion carried.
Next, we have public comment. I have two people signed up. The first is Joe Wukic. Joe, come on up. A three-minute limit unless you've requested time ahead of time, and I don't have any notes on that. So, the ticker is counting as soon as you start talking.
Okay. My name's Joe Wukic. I'm a property owner of 35 Columbia Street. Currently, I am transferring the property to one of my daughters through the gift of equity. As part of that transfer, I had to go through a sidewalk inspection. We've owned the house for approximately 10 years. Over that 10-year period, my daughter and myself have called the city about the Norway maple that the city planted there that is buckling the sidewalk. As part of the transfer, the city department sent me correspondence indicating that I would have to go ahead and replace portions of that sidewalk. I feel this is unreasonable. I think, I understand the intent that was passed by this council or a previous council concerning some safety issues. The culpability for that tree was not of my doing. That culpability of that tree fell on the city when the city put a tree, a specific tree, that being a Norway maple, in a space that's approximately 42 inches. Now, I called the DEC in Avon. The eye height of that tree, which lifespan is about 150 years, is going to be greater than six feet in diameter. The distance from the street... Let me rephrase that. From the street side of the sidewalk to the curb is approximately 42 inches. Now, I understand that there are safety issues. I met with Mr. Vinuti. I said, "Look, I'll replace the sidewalk, but the very problem that caused me to come and talk to you people tonight and Mr. Vinuti is going to be there because what was discussed was the city removing the tree because the tree caused the problem to begin with. The tree will remain, causing additional problems as time goes on to someone else, my daughter, or someone else. Is this reasonable? It's not by anybody's standards." Mr. Vinuti said we're a, Geneva's considered an urban forest city. The head forester at the DEC in Avon indicated that the DEC considers Norway maple trees an invasive species, and they don't recommend planting those for the sidewalks like we used to do years ago. Now, I did some research. There is no statutory requirement that I found that requires me to have a sidewalk in Geneva. And that's evidenced by on Spring Street, the west side doesn't have a sidewalk. Upper Washington Street, there are areas that they don't have a sidewalk. There's got to be some type of amicable agreement that could be had relative to the... Take the tree out, put a ornamental tree in that is sized for that appropriate 42, 44-inch spacing. Why do we have to go ahead and put, keep a maple tree who's compromised by the space limitations that are currently there? And as it grows up, it's going to grow out into the street anyway. I think it's, I understand the intent of what you guys did. I did some research. Ithaca, I believe, charges all homeowners $50 bucks. It's put into a reserve fund for cases like this, something to consider. Statutory-wise, I don't have to have a sidewalk. If I remove that sidewalk and filled it in with dirt where the sidewalk was and grassed it, it would promote a better health for the tree. And as I said, there's no statutory requirement that I have a sidewalk there. I understand the need to have a sidewalk. If we can come to some agreement, I'm more than amicable to work toward some resolution. But I don't feel that I should be, or any other taxpayer in the city of Geneva, should have to pay for something that they had no say-so in when that tree was placed there. So, where we go from here, be interesting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Charles King.
I wish you would have the holidays, everyone. I don't need to, I've had something, but I'll say it at a different meeting.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to council reports. I'm going to start with Counselor Pruitt, and we're going to go around in order. I'm going to autopilot because I got to excuse myself for a second. Counselor Pruitt?
Thank you, Mayor. I might say, I believe, you can check with the Shade Tree Committee, but I'm pretty sure that Norway maples will not be planted again in the city. I think those have been sort of taken off the list because there are obviously a number of troubles with them, if you will. And so, your point's well taken. For my report, I wanted to indicate that this is my last council meeting, that my resignation, which I gave over four months ago, has extended the notice through the end of December. So, I have issued the formal resignation. And consequently, I wanted to spend a couple of minutes making a couple of notations. One of that is that I've been impressed in the last few years with the quality of the individuals that I've run into here in Geneva. There are so many people here that are willing to make a contribution outside of their jobs in terms of the amount of time that they spend, how much they care about the city, what they're willing to invest in both the toil and resources, if you will. I think of people like every one of you here in the council. Every single person here, even though we have difference of opinions quite often, as you've noticed. Everybody has a good heart. They have a strong interest in making Geneva a better place for themselves and for their constituents and for everybody else. Every single person does despite our differences of opinion. So, I have a really strong regard for each one of our counselors, bar none, as well as the mayor. I also wanted to thank the GOP and the conservative parties for sponsoring me. I really didn't expect to get elected. There were more people signed a petition against electing me than actually voted for me eventually. So, that came as a surprise to me. And so, I was sort of hopeful, if you will, in terms of what could be done once I got in here. I also wanted to thank a couple of people at the home office level, if you will. Two years ago, when we started the retreat, we talked about what our objectives would be, what our goals would be, and I've never seen so many Post-it notes all over the board. And we really boiled everything down to two primary FOCI, which was really to beautify the city, beautification, and also finance, and formed committees to do so. And one of my heroes in the city is one of our city managers, Adam, who ran the finance committee. And we came up with some great ideas. What impressed me with him is that he didn't just say, "Yeah, that's a good idea. You know, maybe we can look at that," but he would actually do the research, and he'd call other people. Came back with a lot of good information. Counselor Galanese, the mayor, Tom Burrow, and myself were the only ones on the finance committee. Unfortunately, I think the jobs for Frank and for the mayor caused them not to be able to be there quite often, and then Tom was not able. So, it came down to both Adam and myself quite a bit. And consequently, we didn't get as many things on that list done as we'd like. I still think there's quite a few valuable concepts on that list. I still have the list, still look at it, and I'd like to be able to follow up on that in the future. Also, another person that really impressed me was, I think, one of the hardest-working people I've ever seen is Lori Guinan. Never complains about a thing here till 11, 12 o'clock at night, running around cleaning up after everybody afterward. And this is in her primary job. Her primary job is running unteamed things at the, what I call the home office level. There's a number of other people, and I could go on forever, but Joe Vinuti, I can't imagine a better employee than Joe Vinuti. I can't get over how much of a workload that man carries. And every time you see him, he's directly involved and always pleasant and cheerful and productive. And he's done so very quickly. In terms of the fire department, Mike Combs has impressed me quite a bit. Katie Labby, who's now gone, I think has done a wonderful job, and I really applaud the whole zoning initiative, something that isn't really talked about a lot. Huge initiative for the city that should really produce some good results in the future that I think is going to be finalized here in the next few months. So, good job on everybody's part, Sages and Katie's, her old apartment, and everybody's been involved in the zoning. I think also, even at the Finger Lakes Times, I've been impressed with Steve and also Mike Cutello, but Steve in particular, who's done a good job of reporting on us. A lot of people, I think, could have looked at things in a much more jauntous way. He didn't. Getting down to some of the people, I think, on my liaison shifts, on the Shade Tree Committee, I already mentioned Joe Vinuti, but he's at every one of the Shade Tree meetings. I remember when Sage, who used to be in charge of a number of things before she took on her new responsibilities, was in charge of the Shade Tree Committee, and I was just a member before I became a counselor. And she was looking for a replacement, and she voluntold Jim Norwalk that he would be the new chief, and he really didn't want to be. And I have to say, it didn't really work that well to begin with. But he dug in, and he's really straightened this out to where I can't get over how well it's running. So, I look at people like Jim and also to Charlie Rouse, to, I already mentioned Joe Vinuti, to Jay Freer, to Jim, who runs the nursery, to Dahlia. All of them have put enormous amount of time and effort in. They've researched every tree, including the one that's giving somebody trouble with their sidewalk right here. They have a research now of every tree in town, where it stands, if it's healthy, if it needs trimming, if it's in a bad spot, if it needs replacement, if we should be putting something else in. That hasn't been done for quite a few years. And so, that will come in handy, I think. And then also Sage and Adam have increased the budget for... Can't get all the trees planted that the city needs, but more of those will be coming through. So, in terms of the Shade Tree, I think that's been left in great hands. My only regret is without being a liaison, they're full. I won't even get to be a member of that for a while again. In terms of historic Geneva, Carrie Lippincott has done a good job of really managing that much better than I'd seen it before when I first moved back to Geneva. What really impresses me is that she's taken her teeth into the Heritage Trail. I know that several of our counselors talk about having some sort of reason for people to come to Geneva, and I don't think we get our mileage out of the history in the city. We look at even Seneca Falls has quite a bit with, you know, women's rights. We have a lot of that right here in Geneva, and we don't even take advantage of that to bring tourism in. I think the history of the city could really be hyped a lot more to our economic advantage, but also our cultural advantage for our children and for ourselves. I love history, and I can't get over the amount of it in this city that even citizens have lived here their whole life aren't aware of it. So, I look at the Heritage Trail as one way that they can really help us here in the city of Geneva, although the historic Geneva has actually, I guess, a big interest in Rose Hill and the Johnson House, not even in city or even in our county. So, they devote a lot of their attention to that. Be nice to see even more of it devoted to the city of Geneva. And I think the Heritage Trail is one way to do it. I'm almost through. Also, I wanted to mention in terms of Ward Six, this Friday, at the Courtyard Apartments from 4:00 to 7:00, the Brownfield Opportunity BOA, I always forget what the A is, but the consulting firm that we have that is assessing people who live in the neighborhoods in terms of accessibility to the lakefront and in terms of the trail that's being put in around Marsh Creek and also in the Lehigh Valley Trail. All of that will be discussed from 4:00 to 7:00 at the Courtyard Apartments on 10 Goodman Street in their community room. And even if you don't live in Ward Five or Six, it might be interesting to go see what's going on in the city. The last thing that I had to question about was I wasn't sure what, if anything's happening at the corner of... at the corner of East North Street and North Exchange Street. I know that there was a business that was going to go in there. Is that still active for Dunkin' Donuts, or is that, it is? So, I noticed there was no sign there. I think there was a sign for a while, it's no longer there, but it is still an active development. That's great. So, that was it for, for that. I just wanted to thank everybody for your kindness and attention. And also, I, I mentioned being impressed with people up here and in the city government, but I'm also impressed with you people. You got some of you folks, Pete, and others that are here at every meeting, including the gallery in the back that I hear every now and then. So, you have people that show up, I think, at, at every meeting, and that takes a lot of interest in, in community spirit and giving as well. Giving your opinion and helping to direct the council is probably more valuable than you'd realize. People respond to opinions. This group, everyone up here responds to opinions. You can count on that. So, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Peeler. Your time and effort on this council has been appreciated, definitely. Councilor Salamandra?
Hey, just quickly, in honor of National Human Rights Day, the Geneva, Geneva Human Rights Commission presents Know Your Community Resources, a virtual lunch and learn. It's on Zoom, and if you attend, you will hear from organizations in our community that are accessible to all, regardless of social identity or status, and serve to build a better community. Okay, so that's December ninth, twelve to one, and reach out to Erica Collins for the meeting ID and pass code. And then, just finally, I just would like to say to Councilor Pruitt, as someone who passed that petition, I can be wrong, and working with you and learning from you has just been one of the only joys of this job.
Council Regan?
Thank you. Yeah, just a quick note on the sidewalk issues. I have to say, the, the story that we heard tonight is one that really drives forward or makes it aware, the kind of unfairness of, of this at many times. And I recognize, having looked into it a little bit myself, that this is not something you can fix with a, with an exemption to one or two people. It's something we really have to get an ordinance going on, et cetera. It's, it involves a budget, so it's a year in the making. So, I, I did put out to the council suggesting a work session on this topic, and that's just a reminder, I'd love to see that happen. We have a little bit of time, but doesn't hurt to get right on things like that. As far as the Green Committee goes, November, we met, the group met primarily reviewing projects that have been underway and brainstorming a bit as to two thousand twenty-two. Also, the subcommittee I mentioned at the last meeting, which is dealing with waste and what happens when the landfill closes, did meet, and I attended that. It was a, mostly a meeting to discuss what the charge will be for the group. I was pleased to see, though, Darren McGee, who is really an expert in this field, having studied how communities deal with waste around the world. He's a professor at the colleges. He has volunteered or agreed to become the chair of that committee. It's a working group, and will meet for a year, once a month, and I'll probably report on that as progress is made there. And then finally, I have to join Laura and just, although I'd rather sit here and convince him to stay, I just want to say thank you to John for all that he added to this group. And I hope that you realize the value of what you did contribute. I know it's frustrating sometimes to, you know, things don't move as fast as you want, or there's, you know, the arguments and the discussion doesn't go the way you wish it did, but your research and your demeanor was always a steadying and helpful factor with us. And on a personal note, I learned an awful lot watching how you presented your ideas and the depth of your research, and I, I do hope that you'll stay connected with us, even as you take every Monday and Wednesday, the first Monday and Wednesday off here, here moving forward. It's a big seat to fill, and I do hope that we will see some nominations as early as January, which is as early as we could do it, because it would be good to have a full council. I, I think it's a much more effective body when every place is represented and, and frankly, when we have a vote that it couldn't constantly be a tie. So, I'm hoping that we work quickly to fill that seat with someone level-headed, thoughtful, and will bring a lot to council, just as John did. And finally, happy holidays to everyone. I hope we enjoy a nice winter and, and holiday season.
Councilor Cameron?
Well, I, I do, I'm going to make a statement about the IDA and the pilot, but I just wanted to just also say, report on a few things. Just to, as a segue, yes, John, thank you for your service. Thank you for, it was a pleasure getting to know you and to work with you on various issues, and I appreciate, I do, is one of the things that Jan said was the depth of your research on certain topics of interest, and, and that was very helpful. So, all the best to you on your, on your new days off next year. The, you, you may all know that we did officially constitute a committee called the Lake, the Lakeside Railroad Integration Committee. So, now it's a committee that's actually recognized by the city council. The idea is to discuss and to do research on how we might come up with a new plan or a new, let's say, scheme for managing the railroad. And this is, the idea would be ultimately to move it east a little bit so that we can open up the Sixth Ward and give it access to the lakefront. It's an issue that the Sixth Ward is very, residents of Sixth Ward really would like, and we've talked about this before. But, so, we, we've tasked the committee members in our last meeting, we're meeting the last, the first Friday of every month. So, we're on a regular cycle now. And we've contacted some of the stake, some of the stakeholders in this, the Finger Lakes Railroad and the county IDA, which is where the, the pilot that was originally negotiated with the railroad was with the county. And actually, the director of the county IDA is meeting with us on Friday of this week. It's, it's his last, he's retiring, so it's his last, December is his last month, but he's going to give us an education, I think, because he goes way back with this agreement. So, we'll get, we'll get a lot of useful information. Counselors are welcome to attend. It's at twelve o'clock or twelve-ish at the Welcome Center in the conference room. So, he'll, he'll give us a, you know, he'll give us some background, and, and that's part of it, is what we have to do is educate ourselves about the issue. We plan ultimately in the next couple of months to have Finger Lakes Railroad leadership come in and talk to us as well. And the, the whole approach is that this is something we might be able to figure all out together, you know, all the different stakeholders. So, I'm optimistic that the committee will move forward on this. And there's some other issues that, like John said, mentioned, the meeting on Friday from four to seven over at the community room of the, of Goodman Street complex, they're going to be talking a little bit about, I mean, access to the lake or getting, let's say, rights, a right of way over the tracks to the, to the lake is going to be part of the discussion. I have heard through the grapevine, well, not, not exactly the grapevine, but also the county is in receipt of a, of some funding for integration between, I'm, I'm not exactly sure what it's called yet. I got a very preliminary word from the county planner, but who heard about us and said that there may, that, that what this committee's doing is relevant to the kinds of activities there this grant is designed to support. So, it's not like we need to get money. We have a lot of research to do. We all, all the members of the committee are doing this, you know, pro bono. We don't need money for a lot of the information we've got to collect and, and do in the, in the initial phases of this, I would say, the first years of initial phase. So, anyway, just, I, I think it's a promising start. I wanted to let you all know that. Related to the, this IDA pilot for, Councilor, if I could just request you to speak as a citizen, not as a council?
Okay, I'll speak as a citizen, but I would like to hear from other counselors if they could, and they could speak as citizens as well if they feel like. You may all recall that I was a big proponent of this project thirty-plus months ago when council was apprised of the potential of a project. And what I, what I was concerned about was that the city planned to rezone that property inside of and in the same timeline as the rezoning of the entire city. And I bellyached a lot about that because I didn't think that we, I thought what was most important was for the city to get a, to fast-track a zone, a rezoning of that particular property and area so that we could help advance a project and get it to the stage where it is at this point. So, fast-tracking the, the zoning and everything else, I was certainly promoting that because I've always said, I think people remember I say this periodically, it's Geneva's got to grow out of its financial problems. I don't think there's an alternative to that. Our population has stayed the same, roughly the same for the last thirteen years or so. So, unfortunately, this is not the deal that I expected. One of the things I did was, on several occasions, including with the developer, asked, "Are you going to pay taxes?" And, you know, the, the thing is, is I was, was answered in the affirmative. And then, to follow up, I asked staff members, "Okay, are we talking about, based on the ballpark parameters of this project scale, whether it's twenty-five million or twenty-eight million or twenty-two million or thirty million, what is, what is the expected return to the general fund that we can expect over the, you know, you know, for the city taxpayers?" And I, I used a range. Is it between four and five hundred thousand dollars a year? And the answer was, on more than one occasion, was, it was a head nod, yes, or a verbal yes. And that, you know, and it makes sense. It was reasonable to, 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 to think that we could get that kind of money out of this project on a, on an annual basis, and that would help the taxpayers. But that's not what has come to pass. I don't feel this, if, I, I'm not sure who negotiated this with this, but I don't believe the IDA negotiates these. They go yes or no to a pilot. The negotiations happen among, I think, staff with the developer, and then the developer, you know, gets the queue, and then we see the pilot. And the pilot was distributed to council, and this is where there's basically an eight million dollar give-back over the next fifteen years, eight million dollars. And that's a hit to general fund and the school budget and everything else. But the other thing is, I, I, I am disappointed in what staff's presented to us, and I'm disappointed because they probably had to know what was on deck in terms of the offer of the developer. And I wish we had had an executive session where the city manager or the city staff or whoever is involved in this negotiation would have come to us and said, "We need an executive session. We have a tentative offer," and allowed the council to speak to that particular offer because this offer is woefully inadequate for what, what they're asking for. The other thing is, is that there need to be, there needs to be some guarantees in this. One of the things is we need to do a due diligence, a deep dive on what projects this developer or has built that are similar to ours. Where are they and what do they look like? They have a website that is paper-thin. There's, there's no pointing to the Marriott they built somewhere else in the Bahamas or any of that kind of stuff. And then the second thing is, I, I, the second guarantee I'd like to see is they've flashed this name, Marriott Resorts is going to run the hotel. There, it's going to be a Marriott signature property. Is that a guarantee? Or is there going to be a bait and switch? You know, are we going to have something else when the project ends? Oh, well, Marriott couldn't, whatever. I think that we need to have a guarantee as to who is going to manage and operate that hotel and on what, under what kind of a banner.
Councilor, could I just request you kind of wrap it up?
I'm going to wrap it up. I'm getting very close to wrapping it up.
I hope so.
Okay? By the way, I was asking you a lot, a lot of these questions in previous council meetings, and you chose to embarrass me, okay?
Counselor.
Okay, and I can remember the times. Okay, so, okay, so, so let me finish.
You understand where we are in the agenda.
Yes, I do.
Let's stick to the agenda.
Yes, I do.
As I mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, let's have focus.
Okay, and I know that, but the thing is, is that the count, the city manager is going to personally-
You don't need to personally attack anybody.
I am not attacking anybody. The city manager's going to meet with the IDA this Friday. Okay? I'm, and thank you very much. I'll finish, okay? Quickly. Where is the guarantee? This pilot is about the hotel and the restaurant. There is no guarantee, but in the presentation package, they're going to build fifty-one condos. Well, is there any obligation to build the fifty-one condos? Because that's where other tax money's going to come from. And by the way, are they going to call them townhouses? Or are they going to call them condos? Okay? Now, so, the thing is, is that, and, and the thing is, is there's no pilot for a condo, but the state practically gives them a thirty-four percent reduction in the assessment. So, they're going to pay less anyway, but there's still, the condos are a twenty to thirty million dollar construction project. So, there's an opportunity to get significant tax revenue there, but they have to build it. And is there an obligation? Have they signed somewhere an attestation that is bindable that they will build those? I'd like to see that, and if we don't have that, I'm really concerned about that. So, those are the, those are the, those are the things I'd like to see addressed and to give this community, because a lot of people are concerned about this, give this community and its residents and its taxpayers some assurance that we've got a good deal. Okay? So, those are some of my concerns. The other thing is, is that this, this community and, and Councilor Pruitt just talked about all the wonderful labors of all these different people in the community that are stepping up and doing things and, and everything else. This group of outsiders is asking for a pilot from us. They're not even providing an opportunity for us to invest in it. It's their money, they're going to do it, and they're going to reap the benefits. So, right now, there is a certain gulf between them and us. Okay? And let's just make a comparison. Hobart and William Smith College is a nonprofit institution in this community, and they pay over two hundred thousand dollars a year now, and it's increasing. The first payment under this proposed pilot is thirty thousand. The second one is sixty. The third one is like ninety. It will take fifteen years or ten years to get up to four or five hundred thousand dollars. So, I, I really oppose it, and I hope the rest of the counselors will speak to that and say whether they, they support it or don't. Moving on, Councilor Peeler?
And I'll, I'll pass right now, but I am not giving up. No, no, I, I'll, I'll-
Also, you've had enough.
That's right, but I, I will come back.
You've had enough time.
Councilor Peeler?
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving and happy holidays and Merry Christmas. This is our December meeting, so I hope everyone has a wonderful and safe and very fun holiday season. I do want to commiserate about sidewalks. My sidewalk has a manhole on it, and it's cracked to bejesus. And if I wanted to sell my house, I'd have to fix it myself. And as kids, we all know what it's like to ride your bike and walk around town and have the house that was sold a couple of years ago get fed up with the city and rip their sidewalk out, and now it's just mud and tree roots. We didn't like walking ourselves down those sides of the sidewalk, and we didn't like riding our bikes on those sidewalks, and we avoided those sidewalks when we went trick-or-treating. But we have a, we don't have a very good sidewalk policy here because we have the city who owns the sidewalk, but we have the resident who has to pay for everything, and that's backwards. And I think Ithaca does do it right. And I don't know how necessarily we should model our ways, but when we actually cause negligence as a public body to someone's private quasi-public- but when we actually cause negligence as a public body to someone's private quasi-public property and then prohibit them from transitioning property or selling property, boy, does that make us look real unintelligent. And I think we have a, we have lots of smarter ways forward with this. And I, and it's just, I, I, I feel your frustration. I don't have any immediate solutions. So I, I do want to remind the city residents that the Geneva Police Department is taking part in Toys for Tots, and that ends on December tenth. So if you haven't dropped off a unwrapped toy or game to the Geneva Police Department, please give a, give it a chance to do that. You can make a happy kid who wouldn't necessarily have a gift from, from someone or something. You'd get a gift, and that's, that's important. And that's, again, that ends December tenth. So for recreation, recreation right now is cruising down at the rink. If anybody wasn't down at the rink last weekend, it was mobbed. And I think one of the things that I lament about is that I'd like to see open skating opened up for more than just two hours on Saturday and Sunday. I think it created a bottleneck down at the rink, and us parents and families who bring our kids down there to have some fun and, you know, learn how to take a shot to the rear end on solid ice, which is important, and that's part of my upbringing anyways. You, I think we should think about something or more than just four hours over the course of the weekend. I know, I know the ice skating rink is also open from Monday through Friday from eleven-thirty to twelve, to one-thirty for open skating. That's not going to be really highly utilized until school is out or there's, or there's holidays because school is in session during those times. And for the most part, the ice rink is for children and families. When you go down there, you'll see that to be self-evident. But if you're interested in skating, give the Recreation Department a call. It's seven eight nine two two seven seven. And that is the end of my notes. I'd like to make some public comments as a city resident and not as a city counselor, mainly because I'm not bound by the code of ethics, but I'm not going to do so tonight.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Counselor Burrow?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Joe first off for coming to the podium tonight. And if I could just have a quick question and a little bit of dialogue. I, I'm assuming that you're required to replace a panel or two of sidewalk because the roots have raised a panel or two. And so your sidewalk is no longer level? Is that, is that the situation? Yeah, so, so I'm not sure. I don't think that there's a reasonable remedy, and what's the purpose of doing that because it's still not going to be level unless you remove the root. So it, it, it doesn't make sense in this situation, in my opinion, to, to continue with our current ordinance on the sidewalk. And I'm, just want to thank you for bringing this to our attention because you, you're not the only property in town where there's been uneven panels and the tree remains, and you're replacing something that is only a Band-Aid. And that is not the purpose of, of the ordinance that's on the books, so. Right, and, and your forester, having a forestry degree myself is accurate. So anyway, it's, we, we need to get that on the agenda to amend that ordinance. It just makes perfect sense. And, and you're right. You know, fairness is, you know, a fair is what you pay to ride a bus, but this just isn't right. So I want to thank you for that. So of course I have to start out with the blood drives for December. This is the giving time of year. This is a hugely important month to, for me personally, for giving blood because I now have to catch my wife, who for the first time in her blood donating career, which is about forty years long, she is qualified for the Sixers Club. So she gave last week, and that was her sixth donation, and I'll be making my sixth donation on Friday, December seventeenth, at the Presbyterian Church from one to seven P M. And I'm hoping that I can report particularly back to the mayor that I'm a member of this exclusive club. So anyone that would like to join me, I, I beg you to do so, and I'll buy you lunch the next day. Other, other blood drives this month, next Wednesday, December eighth, at Geneva General Hospital from ten A M. to four P M. I already mentioned the Presbyterian Church on the seventeenth. Wednesday, December twenty-second, at the Hydrant Hose, eleven A M. to four P M. And Thursday, December thirtieth, at the Hall Fire Department, another delightful place to donate blood. I gave there last time, from two P M. to six-thirty P M. Updates with the Geneva B I D. To remind the public primarily, the council has received several constant contacts on Jingle Week in Geneva. Excuse me. That has kicked off, and St. Peter's Community Arts Academy Choir is performing tomorrow in the Sonica Street parking lot at five-thirty. We have a quote vendor village, including pop-up vendors on Sonica Street and Exchange Street throughout the day on Friday. Friday, Linden Street will be closed for a holiday event at four-thirty, which will include street dining, art walk with wine touring at the Left Bank and the Dove Gallery. There, there's going to be some live alpacas for children to pet on Linden Street. The Geneva Christian Fellowship Choir is going to be performing apparently with Santa Claus after the tree lighting on Friday at five-thirty. So this is a great family time or a good time to come down and relax and enjoy all there is to do in downtown Geneva, not just Linden Street. The, I had a number of probably more concerns this past month about goings-on and a lot of questions and concerns. And, and just a couple of things to throw out there as far as downtown and the D R I project. Several people have stopped me on the street and are concerned about, we now have loading zones in our downtown that is taking away valuable retail parking spots. There are, I don't, not sure how many, but there is a loading zone on the north side of Castle Street across from the post office, which is a high turnover parking area. And we have a loading zone set up there where you cannot park your car. I believe it's Monday through Friday at any time, and there are two parking spaces there that are, that are highly valuable. Also had a lot of comments about the sign pollution that we now have erected, which are all new parking signs. We have signs that say, "No parking here at a corner" when there isn't even a place to park on the corner. We have signs that say, "No standing", which is kind of difficult to interpret. Some, some, some poles have actually four signs on them with hours and times and no standing and when you can park. And it's, appears to be a little bit confusing, but I think that I think the com, overall comments that I've received are, it's affecting the, the traffic to their businesses because people cannot park out in front like they used to be able to park. So this is just a concern for us going forward to see if we want to make some adjustments to the new signage due to the D R I project. Excuse me. They restriped, I believe, Castle Street today. And the concerns that I've had from people is that, are they going to put down the last layer of asphalt? Because we have, we discussed this last month or at a work session, I believe. We still have sewer hole covers that are higher than the driving surface. And we have cold patch, and there's concern about how that's going to hold up when you're running your snowplow level with the driving surface and what kind of havoc that that may create. So that's just the buzz going around downtown, and I just thought it was important to bring that before the council. Had a couple of questions on the status of the electric charging station in the Sonica Street lot. There, there was gung-ho activity for a while, and right now the project seems to be on a hold. I'm not sure what the plan is, Sage, for that to be active. But that, those questions are swirling. Had a concern from a constituent who is affected by the foundry cleanup and was wondering if there's a way in the spring if the public hydrants can be used to water the sod so an individual would not have to pay the water and the sewer bill to maintain this program on their own. So I mentioned to the person that I would bring it up before council in my report. And it was, it seemed like an interesting idea and not certain if it's feasible or not, or if that can be worked out with the fire department. Wanted to confirm that the winter parking arrangement is going to be the same as it is last year. I know, I think we've received a couple of constant contacts, and it sounds as though that that's going to be renewed the same way and that everyone can sign up for the same type of program. So as long as that's the case, that is going to go over very well. I, I believe it has been working the last however many years that we've been doing that. Is, is that right?
You have to sign up to the new system. We'll use the old, we'll duplicate through December, and then it'll just be the new system.
Okay.
It's an easier-
It's the same program, different notification.
Okay.
But you must sign up through our city website
Yeah.
to activate it to the new text messaging, messaging system.
Great, thank you. Also had a concern from a constituent because we talked about this at the last meeting. There was an incident with duck hunting down at the lakefront right around the end of October. And apparently, one of the hunter vehicles was stuck in the mud up to their axle in the, outside of the parking area and was in so deep, he had to contact his other hunting pal with his big rig to to tow him out, and apparently it left quite large ruts on the city-owned public property. And the constituent was concerned on whose expense it would be to repair public property when, in fact, there was actually no need to have those vehicles there at the time. So I don't know how the city goes about that type of reimbursement or if they do. The H D C and the College Livability Tax Force did not meet this past month. I have started a one-person fundraising committee for the Geneva Shade Tree Committee and the Nursery Tree Planting Program. And I have reeled in our friend Jim Norwalk from the Geneva Shade Tree Committee. And I came about this because many of you know that I am a frustrated forester. And in the winter, for fun and exercise of my heart, I remove trees and I haul trees and I split wood and I burn a lot of wood. And I do it for exercise and stress relief. So the Emerald Ash Borer hit a very large concentration of ash trees in our city, which is primarily on the south end of town on J Street where I live, where we have large lots. And one of my neighbors and I last fall and winter removed probably about fifteen ash trees, some as large as thirty-six inches, from our neighbor's properties. And, and we had split all the wood and stacked it. And even though I have eleven fireplaces in my house, I have far more than a lifetime supply of firewood. So adopting a plan from some of my closest friends in Maine, I decided that I would sell the firewood to anyone that needed it and deliver it and donate one hundred percent of the proceeds to the City of Geneva for the Geneva Shade Tree Committee and Nursery Tree Planting Program. So I have donated some of my business ad space in the Finger Lakes Times, and we made, we made two, two face cord delivery three weeks ago. And this weekend, we have orders for four more face cords to deliver. And this winter, I probably have another fifteen or twenty trees to remove. And if I don't get rid of the wood, it's going to affect my marriage and my property. So I'm happy to report that I'm here to present to the comptroller today my first donation to start this fund, and it's a hundred and fifty-dollar check. And I'm hoping that every month for the next year or so, I'll be making a donation in to this fundraising plan. And I'm hoping that we can set up a separate revenue line item in the budget so this money can be earmarked primarily for the nursery, but also to purchase shade trees. And depending on the size, size of the account, if that money needs to be transferred over into the tree removal program with a D P W, that's really what it is for. But, but I do this all for fun. I do it for exercise. And I think that's, this is the best way to give back one more time to, to the community that I enjoy serving.
Tom? Will, will that fund also support the Arbor Day festivities where they give out little saplings, or is it strictly for the nursery?
I'd be happy to include the Arbor Day Foundation sampling program as well, which I'm a lifetime member of the National Arbor Foundation, so I'm, I'm happy to have that part of the same pot, if you will. So also sadly, I want to say goodbye to my friend John Pruitt, who I've enjoyed so much to be part of his team on this council at our midway point. And, and I'm going to miss you very much. And I, I am sorry that you're leaving. And I am so envious of the time that you have to dedicate to the position of being an elected official. And I'm, I'm just so, so envious of the time that you have, but I'm not envious that you're leaving because through all of the challenges that we've had in making the decisions for our constituents, this is a wonderful experience. I'm looking forward to my last twenty-four months. And I just want you to know that I'm very much going to miss your participation and your insight and not only the conversations in public, but all of our offline communications. And I know that all those, all those communications are going to continue and further our friendship, which is just, I just enjoy it so much. I just won't be able to enjoy it in public at the end of the month. And lastly, although I'm not quite in the Christmas spirit at the moment, seeing that I just changed my calendar today, but we're not going to be in public again until next year, and I want to make sure that everyone enjoys the holiday to their maximum ability. And please have a safe holiday as well and enjoy the precious time that we have together and especially with the families and the people that you love. Thank you very much.
Counselor Galanese?
I, I'll be quick. I, I just wanted to piggyback off Jan, Billy, Tom on the sidewalk issue. I do know that it's an issue for a lot of taxpayers. I feel that the city has some bylaws, maybe we might call them, that are just ridiculous and they need to be rewritten. So it's fair and balanced. John can attest to this. Down in Ward Six, somebody that lived on a corner property- Um, uh John can attest to this down in Ward Six, somebody that lived on a corner property was responsible for pretty much replacing fifty-two flags. Who can afford that? So we do need to start working with people a little more instead of turning our backs or, as I want to say it, give them the Heisman. We are taxpayers. We deserve to be heard and to compromise with the City of Geneva when it comes to sidewalks and a lot of other things amongst that. I also want to say, John, thank you for becoming a friend and for the time that you've spent on council, even though we may have disagreed. I respect you fully and I wish you the best. I'm a little jealous. I don't know what you're going to do with all your time, but that's up to you to decide. Um, and I just wanted to spend a minute here because some other counselors has touched on it, but I'm not going to bring up my opinion because I really don't have one on the American Legion property. But I just wanted to say to the IDA board that Geneva is very fortunate to have an IDA based in our city. There's a hundred and nine IDAs in the in New York State, fifty-six county IDAs, one IDA for all New York City and fifty-two IDAs based in other cities, towns, or villages. So we're very fortunate to have them based in Geneva. And I'd like to, you know, give a big shout out and a thank you to like Pinky Cicely and other board members that have moved this city forward by doing their due diligence and being a very effective board. It looks out for the best interest in Geneva. If it wasn't for them, Geneva probably wouldn't have progressed as fast as it has in the last fifteen years. So like I said, we're very fortunate here in Geneva and we need to have faith in this board because they are looking out for the best interests, but they also are having a long-term vision. It may not affect us today what we want, but down the road, it will bring us to where we need to be. And one of their main jobs is to offer attractive incentives to keep businesses here or to move here. You may not think that they're fair, but what is fair? But we do need the IDA and I appreciate everything they do. And I also want to give a shout out and a thank you for all you do for the school, the school staff, the students, and the parents is Jessica Avilia and Yadenat Negron with the Geneva Parent Communication Council. They created this council back a few weeks ago when uh there was problems at Geneva High School. They took matters into their own hand and created a a Facebook page where you know, you could join as a member and they give a daily update and you could go to the school and greet the kids when they come in, the staff when they come in. I think that it really has made a difference. I have participated once and I I'm glad that I did. So I want to thank them for stepping up and grabbing the bull by the horns and and doing something as parents. So thank you there. Um, and at last, I'd just like to say happy holidays to everybody. And uh I guess happy new year too. We won't be meeting until after the first of the year, so happy new year and I wish everyone good health and uh best wishes into twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
Okay, in the absence of Counselor Noon, he's asked me to read his council report on the PRB. December second, uh this is for the city council. Since last city council meeting, the Police Review Board has had one monthly meeting of the full board, five committee meetings, one training, and one meeting with HWS class that is studying movements for police accountability and asked to have conversations with the PRB. The next PRB monthly meeting is tomorrow night at six-thirty in the Geneva Housing Authority Conference Room B. And it will be streamed live on the city's YouTube channel. As the plans reported last month indicated, Chief Pasalaco came to participate in the PRB's monthly meeting for November. The chief and the PRV PRB had a productive conversation about the materials the PRB developed to intake complaints and the chief's current policies and practices for reviewing and responding to accusations of officer misconduct. The PRB has since made changes to their complaint intake document based on their conversations with Chief Pasalaco. PRB is now going to have three community forums to get public feedback on its proposed complaint forum and the accompanying instructions. Both documents are available on the PRB's page on the city's website. The first community forum will take place as a public comment period during the PRB's regularly monthly meeting tomorrow at six-thirty PM in Conference Room B of the Geneva Housing Authority. The other two community forums will be standalone events. The first taking place Saturday, December fourth at four PM in Conference Room B at the Geneva Housing Authority. And the second taking place Tuesday, December seventh at six-thirty PM at the Boys and Girls Club on Carter Road location. Anyone attending a forum in person can simply sign up to speak upon arrival. All speakers will be asked to limit their comments to two minutes. The community members can also sign up to deliver their comments via Zoom for the two forums at the Geneva Housing Authority, December second and fourth by emailing Geneva PR excuse me, Geneva dot PRB at Geneva or excuse me at gmail dot com. Let me repeat that again. Geneva dot PRB at gmail dot com. Um, I'll just follow up with Counselor Burrow uh tomorrow or excuse me, Friday night at five-thirty will be the Mayor's Tree Lighting Ceremony. The Finger Lakes Chorus will be singing. Uh, Santa arrives at six PM. There will be some indoor activities and outdoor activities. In the outdoor activities, we're asking everybody to please social distance. Any indoor activities with the kids in Santa will require a mask for everybody, including the children, please. Okay, we're going to move on to the city manager's report.
Great. So the DRI streetscape is wrapping up for the winter. You'll still see activity uh through mid-December. Uh on the signs and the loading zone, I know Joe Vanoudi is looking into some concerns there. It was developed after time lapse of, you know, throughout the day to find where the spots for trucks were having trouble um loading and unloading to be able to serve the businesses. Uh but I do know that that's being looked into. So you will notice that the streetscape is not finished. There's asphalt where there won't be asphalt in the spring, but it's there just for safety throughout the winter time. A lot of the seat walls and a lot of the above-ground elements are not here yet. And so you'll also see that come to fruition in the springtime when they're finishing that up and then moving to five and twenty. Uh, just a note that the IDA is uh has one vacancy uh after Frank Cicely's uh term ended and he served uh the IDA for so many years. Um, so they will be putting a call out for applicants. Uh, the we do have a city council work session December sixth. It just falls, the timing is a little um different since the first Wednesday fell uh tonight. Uh, the topic is uh on recreation and so Dave, Adam, and I will be here to listen uh to your uh work session. Uh, thank you to Kelly and Adam for the audit and all, you know, many hands throughout the year um go into making sure that it's smooth, but just a thank you for that. And the only other additional thanks for all the meeting and event announcements. Our holiday farmer's market is Saturday, December eleventh, nine to two at uh the Welcome Center. And there will be uh horse-drawn carriage rides on the lake from nine uh to noon. And lastly, just a thank you to Counselor Pruitt for serving our city and serving on council. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is unfinished business. We move on to a second reading of an ordinance amending chapter three thirty-five of the city code Parking on Herbert Street presented by our city manager.
I'll get it up uh for everyone online, but it this is a resolution um just cleaning up some safety issues at the corner of Herbert Street. And I'll pass it back to you, Mayor.
Can I have a motion, please, for the second reading of the ordinance, Counselor Pruitt? Second, Counselor Peeler, discussion. No discussion. Thank you, city manager, for your efforts, but I think we're going to move on to a roll call vote. City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Pruitt?
Aye.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burrow?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamendra?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is a resolution authorizing an agreement with New York State Electric and Gas Corporation for an electric franchise in the City of Geneva, New York, presented by our city manager.
So this is electric franchise that will run uh for uh ten years, uh starting when it's agreed upon. And we did it this has been on a docket for a while and we did go back to make amendments uh to make sure we're serving our trees well, um and also just our public purpose in our easements.
Motion, Counselor Galanese, second by Counselor Peeler, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burrow?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamendra?
Aye.
Counselor Pruitt?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is a resolution authorizing a public hearing for local law amending sewer rates presented by our assistant city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So every year we have to approve the budget and then we approve the water and sewer rates. So we'll do the water next, but for sewer, we have to establish a public hearing. There's no changes to the sewer rates, so uh just a formality on this one.
Need a motion? Counselor Pruitt, seconded by Counselor Peeler. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Pruitt?
Aye.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burrow?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamendra?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is a reading, first reading of an ordinance amending section three forty-one of the Geneva Municipal Code Water and Sewers presented by our assistant city manager.
Uh, thank you. So same thing here, uh just just updating the the first reading of the water rates. There were no changes to the um inside-the-city rates. And the only changes to the outside city were, if you look up at the screen, the water allowance in gallons. Some of those changed just slightly, uh made more sense for the structure of the rates, um but no significant changes there.
Can I have a motion, please? Counselor Peeler, seconded by Counselor Galanese. I need discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamendra?
Aye.
Counselor Pruitt?
Aye.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burrow?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is the first reading of an ordinance amending chapter three hundred, Solid Waste, presented by our assistant city manager.
Okay, so we've talked about this in a couple different ways. Um, where we are this evening is um looking to add, instead of we we have four licenses now for um for waste haulers. What we're looking at is something we're referring to as a micro hauler uh license. So we would have what we want to do is add one micro hauler license. And what that would do um is it would be added to the code for the purpose of picking up solid waste, construction debris, and recycling using a pickup truck. You couldn't use something larger than that. Um, you'd be restricted to not have one of the enclosed uh garbage trucks that you see around the city. Um, licensing fee of three hundred fifty dollars annually. Um, this would not be specifically tied to the uh compost facility, although it would be a huge benefit if they were the same uh same entity. Um, so all we're looking to do tonight is amend the that section of the code, chapter three hundred, to add that micro hauler license.
And this will take two readings, so I need a motion. Counselor Galanese, seconded by Counselor Peeler, discussion. I see Counselor Galanese and then Counselor Regan.
So would any of the other three haulers that we have uh be able to apply for this also?
They would, um although I don't think it would be advantageous for them to do so, because they can already do things like this.
So us granting this, let's say he outgrows the pickup truck. Then what?
Then he would have to, um, the firm would have to apply for one of the four licenses to be able to haul in a larger uh larger-capacity vehicle. So they would be restricted to just the pickup um until they were able to secure a uh a different license. The micro hauler license would still be in effect.
Counselor Regan?
Um, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. Uh, yeah, I am uh in favor of this. Um, and I'm also in favor of tying it to what is not just a composting center, but it's called a Resource and Recovery uh park for a reason, because it was kind of envisioned as something that would take care of everything. And this is just one more step. Um, so I just wanted to paint a picture for you, if I could, of of a vision where we can get rid of all our waste in one place, handling it on a small scale where you see responsible separations of recyclables and get some actual assurance that this effort is is being made to keep the waste from the landfill. As a customer, you'd have a swipe card, which is a pay-to-throw operation. That means you're only charged for what you use. Bins would be provided that are small enough to fit into your car. And when you have the time for it, you would drive your trash down yourself. You enter the facility, there's a short line that circles a lot. An attendant would greet you to unload and place the contents of the bin in the corresponding larger bins that are on site. The attendant here is kind of policing a little bit, making sure the correct waste goes to the right place. Uh, over time, you may see a clothing donation on the site. Um, you may see e-waste collected periodically. Maybe there's an annual mattress um collection. Uh, if there's a greater demand in the environment for, say, glass alone or some other material, you will see a bin emerge for just that. So that it will more efficiently recycle a very specific product. When you build your new front porch and you have construction debris, you would contact the same facility and have them pick up the debris that just doesn't fit into your car. And when you're campering the waste down yourself with simple technology, um you'd be able to have this pickup come to your home. Um, and allowing both pickup, but especially the drop-off rate will also address another thing, which is reducing these trucks that are on the road at all times. The school kids and other organizations will take field trips to this site. This is happening now. Eventually, this outreach and educational development will be further um processed with small displays like a this is my speculating, but like a small glass tank on the site similar to an ant farm that educates our kid our kids and community at large, allowing them to see these worms in action, you know, composting and seeing and then they touch the dirt that's the end product. And with all that, um and with all that, we are teaching the next generation, which is really one of the most important things we need to do. Because we're not going to be around forever. We're teaching them about waste and landfills and recycling from a facility that is truly providing a full service with a commitment to just what we need, reducing the waste that we send to landfills. And this is an actual plan with many other creative and important innovations um to the reality that we're facing uh in in disposing of our waste, the and the troubling path that it is now on. And it's right here in Geneva in its beginning phases. It's a business, it's locally owned. Um, I've I've heard the idea that this is somehow a mission creep, that all the space in the business that all the business had intended to do was, you know, collect fifteen dollars a year for composting perhaps and and then sell the product that they they make. But from my knowledge of this facility before it was even built and we saw drawings that did include these bins. And and the pickup that we're now proposing simply makes it more viable and possible for those who don't want to haul the waste themselves. Um, yeah, and and you know, the idea of the fifth hauler or the micro hauler at this point being tied to the site is the Resource Republic Republic or Resource Recovery Park actually handles the waste. It it will handle the bins and the dividers on location. It will be picking up and bringing waste to its own facility where it is responsible for handling whatever it gets. That it's not a business of just picking up and and taking and and dropping the waste off and getting paid by the ton or whatever. It their business really re relies on what they're able to recycle and they have to do this efficiently and well. So they're going to be paying attention, policing what is dropped off so that we can indeed they can profit from their recycling efforts and and we can be diverting waste from the landfill by assuring that this waste is delivered in a manageable way. Um, yeah, so so it would be really nice if we could just like get control of the haulers that we already have in place. Um, but you know, we've seen pushback against things like putting stickers on on the the bins that we now have to identify what's going to the landfill and so forth. I think personally, having a smaller, handling your waste locally and having this here in a way that that I trust their um their genuine concern with the environment, not um, their genuine concern with the environment, not just, not just making money off of people's garbage, or however, however you want to look at it. Um, I, I, I think this is really the way to go on this. Um, and I think that perhaps offering this service, which will be, I, I believe, a less expensive locally-owned operating solution, um, exhibiting their commitment to reducing, uh, waste, maybe what rights our situation with the other haulers. They'll either get themselves together, or, you know, I mean, I wouldn't want to see everyone go out of business, but they either has to, have to face realistically our situation, um, you know, or, or will go to a smaller, uh, localized business that, that, that will do just that. Uh, so, again, I'm in favor of it, and I, I appreciate the efforts that have been made on this, uh, to date. Thank you.
Got three councils. Sorry, Council Burrow, Council Pruitt, Council Cam.
You said Burrow first?
Yeah. I think I did. I thought I saw his hand first, so.
Um, just a couple of questions, um, because we've talked about this several times, and it, my, my recollection is that we kind of get a different version on the real concept of it each time, and so it's left me a little bit confused. But, um, I thought originally we were going to have this fifth license, um, tied to the door in abopration. And, and I still think that it should be, um, because I don't think that a micro hauler should be hauling anywhere else but our transfer station. Um, because now I think we, we are in direct competition with the other four licenses, so that's, that's my first concern. Um, my second concern is that the, currently the four licenses are, um, charged based on the days of the week that they choose to pick up. So, this doesn't have any day limitation. And if, and if I remember, the reason, one of the reasons for the original ordinance was to limit the number of, um, waste hauling vehicles on the road at any particular day or any particular time, if you will. So, this says three hundred and fifty dollars, so, you know, I think it's saying that that could be for one day or seven days. And so, but we don't have any limitation similar to the other licenses, so I'm not sure why that is. Um, secondly, is that, uh, similar to the original four licenses, um, there, there is no limitation on the number of vehicles that this licensee can have. So this person could have twenty-five pickup trucks. Right? Because there is no limitation on how many vehicles the current four licenses have. Whether they have one packer, or they have a fleet of seventy-five packers. So, I understand, you know, a micro hauler sounds like we're only allowing one pickup truck, but it doesn't say that in the ordinance. Because if this thing takes off, which I think would be great if it did, there may be a demand for fifteen pickup trucks that are also allowed to tow a trailer to pick up the items listed. And I'm not sure that, that is what we are bargaining for. Because that tells me that it's not a micro hauler, it's just a type of vehicle that we're defining that can haul certain products. So, you know, the, one of the original intents of having this ordinance was to limit the number of hauling vehicles in our community on any given day. And the way it's currently written, we're, we're not doing that. So, um, these are just all discussion items, but I'm, um, you know, I, I think it's pretty loose right now, and I think the concept is fantastic. And, you know, I, I don't know how, when the applicants come in, if there's more than one, um, how we're going to decipher, um, uh, who's going to get the micro hauler license. I don't anticipate having more than one quality applicant apply. Um, but, you know, we had talked about this before because there really wasn't, I don't believe, any parameters set when we issued the four original licenses, although I wasn't part of the legislative body at the time. So, um, those, those are my concerns. I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable the way it is right now. Um, you know, the, when we originally talked about this, um, we wanted to make sure that it was a contract by job, and it was not a regular route. So, um, I don't believe that it, that it has that in here, because, you know, recycling material can, can be a weekly pickup, which is what we have now. And this is also a recycling micro hauler. So, um, you know, I, I was hoping this would be more based on a compost operation, since none of the four licenses currently do composting. And, and that is just a huge attraction to Jacob's operation, is the compost operation. And, um, so I, I, I'm still thinking that this needs to be worked a little bit. And those are the concerns that I have as presented.
All great questions and concerns. Council Pruitt?
Actually, Todd did refer to the main thing that I was going to mention, that is, uh, that I'm, like, Council Galanese, I'm concerned at the impact on the other four haulers. What, why wouldn't we, uh, indicate that whoever's doing the hauling, that they have to go to the, to our compost center? That could be written right into the ordinance, and I'd like to see that added in, and perhaps we could even agree on that in today's session before it's rewritten. So I would say that really any, any of the micro processing should be taken to the recovery center, regardless of the four or five haulers do it. And I really do think that, uh, that people are going to pick up on this, and there's going to be more than one hauler eventually. I could see Casella trying to get into this, because it's, it's what they do. Uh, and so that being the case, I don't know why we would want to limit it to one truck. What if we, we had a fee per truck? It doesn't have to be three hundred and fifty. What if it was just for sake of example, a hundred dollars? And if, uh, the Resource Recovery Center wanted to have two trucks that, then they'd have to pay a separate fee. If Casella wanted to get three or four trucks, then they'd pay separate fees. That's another way to manage that. So two things. Uh, I would say, number one, that we, uh, require the refuse to be taken to our location. I'd hate to see it just taken down to the dump and put there anyway by somebody else. So if they're doing micro processing, it ought to be at our recovery center. And then secondly, maybe we should do it by vehicle. And I'd like to get people's opinion on that, so it could, we can decide whether to write that in or not. That's my comment.
And I, and I think we're going to need to kind of collaborate, but I would just want to go around the horn and give everybody a chance. Council Camera?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, I've got the, I, I've got the questions on how many trucks? Um, can the, I want to tie it to the transfer station. I don't want, uh, just, you know, a micro hauler running around town with half a dozen trucks and taking stuff either to the transfer station or anywhere else, going into competition with the other haulers, um, you know, for construction debris and that kind of thing. Um, the, a question I have is, uh, let's say I'm a contractor and I tear down the porch, or somebody's from the house, from their house. Can I drive down all the material and, can I drive all the material down to the, uh, transfer station myself and drop it off? Also, um, you know, at some point, uh, that transfer station, if it, if, if there are all these other activities there, doesn't, you know, it, it runs out of land, runs out, out of area. I mean, you know, the thing is, is the two composters that are down there right now are full. And that's where the city was headed with this whole thing. So, I mean, I'm wondering, why don't we have two more composters built? We filled two up in four months. I don't know what was the number, whatever it is. But I think, you know, that we could benefit from having another one. And at least one more, you know, so when do we run out of land down there, given all these other activities? So I think we need to define much more tightly what we're, what we're permitting, and, uh, I'd like to make sure it's tied to the, uh, transfer station and, um, maybe the, yeah, I, I think we have to have a limitation on the fleet that's going to serve this, uh, operation. So I think we've got to, we've got to do a lot more writing in the, uh, in this ordinance to give us the, the guidelines on how we're going to measure success or failure of this, uh, operation. Thank you.
Council Galanese?
I, I just want to be clear that I a hundred percent support what Jacob is doing. But I also must say, he's not the new guy in town when it comes to hauling trash or construction debris. And I do have to look out for locally-owned businesses, as some have stated. That's been here for sixty-plus years, and that's Lions Road Trash. I don't care about Casella, One Iota, but I do care about Lions Road Trash. They've been here, they've been, they've made a, a great impact to this community, and I think that it's unfair to give somebody who started out as a composting, I'm going to call it a pilot, or a grant, or whatever it is, and he's blossoming into this. I believe that it's going to be something that's going to be unstoppable, because he does have the vision, and he does have the know-how, and it is the future, and he's up on it, where everyone else is still in the old ways, but I still want to give the opportunity to these other haulers. And like, I think this couple people have said that he's going to start something that's going to start a wave, because whenever somebody starts something new and it works, you have a competitive market. And it's good that he thought of it first, but the, the process of how this is going, I just feel is a, is a little unfair. And I just want it to be fair and balanced for everybody, and I, I, I want to make a motion to table this. So more discussion can be ma, made on this. I mean, I don't know anyone else's feeling, because I, I, I've heard from several counselors that the, the verbiage in this resolution isn't there.
I, I think, if I could just ask you to hold that motion, because I think there's input that needs to be going along with any tabling motion to give staff direction on how to come back to us with another version. Council Peeler, just hold that one. I think we're going to end up there.
Thank you. Um, I just want to address, uh, a couple of John's questions, because he kind of encouraged a discussion and, and put out some things on the floor for opinions, and I appreciate that type of brainstorming. Um, I don't have concerns about the, the things that you brought up. I don't have concerns about the number of trucks. I don't have concerns about where it goes after it's picked up. I think that the business model and those business decisions are at the, are at the mercy of the business owner. There is a market, there is a demand. None of us here are economists, and we should let that business provide a path forward. And what if, what if he does buy a thousand trucks? That's, buy them in Ontario County, please. We'll get the sales tax. Okay? And, and if there is a disruption in the market, and it's something that we caused because of legislative or ordinance problems, then let us correct it, because we can. But to, but to, but to cripple the process and to not be encouraging of the process and be open, and be open-ended with the process, I, I, I believe is a disservice to this body. And we are trying to evoke state control over a, a private entity, and I think that's, that's, that's not my angle.
Thank you. My two cents would be that, um, we, we talked before about the pace that, uh, this project is moving at and the, and the expansion, and maybe the impact of expansion, particularly to the, the area down there in Sixth Ward. And, um, space was also mentioned here, which, which also concerns me. So I, I do see an opportunity to modify this ordinance as we move forward. I'd like to give staff that direction. So I would like everybody's input. I have heard that we want to direct the waste to the recovery center. I think that's.
I was, if I can interrupt to get tallies, because I don't have any majorities yet for direction, and I could go through the items if you would like, or you. Okay, great. And one just note, the compost facility is not at capacity yet, and we can ask Jacob Fox to give an update that, um, that we can pass on to all of you, but.
For the city manager, as you bring items that we've talked about forward, we need to raise a hand.
Yes, thank you. So the first one is to have a requirement that the, um, collection goes to the Resource Recovery Park. Okay, great. The next one is to have a, uh, we'll split it into two. For, first one is to have a day limitation. So to set a certain number of days that, um, could go out to pick up. So just a hands up if you want, seven days a week, just to flip it up. We don't care which days they go.
I, I think we, if I can interrupt, I think we just need to be consistent with the other four licenses. What, what are, what are their options, and why would this fifth license have different options?
So I'll do that as a second option.
That is a business issue, and I am an economist.
Yeah, so we'll do it separately. So if, if you're all in favor of the days, you could then do the fee differently to have them opt in, I believe it's Monday through Thursday right now, one fee each day, and then Friday and Saturday. So it's a six-day window setup of opportunity. So, how about a hand, show of hands that you want to model a fee uh, based on that same six-day model, a fee per day for four of the days, Monday through Thursday?
Currently, we don't allow the haulers on Saturdays.
Thank you. So Monday, so it's Monday through Friday operation, a different fee on Friday. So that's. Yes. Okay. I'm coming to that next, thank you. But I guess the yearly, so we'll be not doing a yearly fee in the same manner, and so we'll break up that fee to reflect those days. Okay. The next one is I don't know, limitation on the number of vehicles, as Council Cam was saying. So how many would like to limit the number of vehicles?
But again, you know, we, we don't limit the number of vehicles on the other four. So, no, we don't. So, you know, Casella has several thousand vehicles. They just don't all service Geneva, New York.
Yeah, but just, just a second, though. The thing is, is these vehicles are all going to go through that small street to that one place. And that's why I think we want to limit.
Unless there's business, unless there's something to haul.
That, that just ties into the entire conversation.
Jump, jump in.
I'd just like to say that Jacob Fox is here, and he's going out of his mind at the amount of misinformation being ta, said by counselors, I think. So, like, talking about the space there, I think we need to be able to have him correct this information, otherwise we're, it's just crazy.
I, I think at this point, we're talking about where the waste will go. We're talking about days of the week. We're talking about the restriction of vehicles, and I understand what you're saying, Council Burrow. I think, for me, as I look for this evolving, we can always come back and say, hey, this is, this is really successful. This makes sense. Let's open it up a little bit more. So, you know, for me, I'd like to get something passed. I imagine staff and Jacob would like us to get something passed, because we keep coming back to this. So, let's get something grounded and get it moving, and then we can modify as we move forward. Given what Jacob has heard and the city manager, can't they come back with another one where they've said, where they've taken this input and they put together and they redo this one for the next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're going to do.
Yep.
Okay. They just need good direction from council.
Just trying to get the majority, so we bring back to you what you're wanting. So on then, can we have the hands back up on the no limitation on the number of vehicles?
You changed it.
As many as needed.
Well, I can have five vehicles.
So what, what, what? What was the question?
Then. No limitation on vehicles. Okay.
And you will work that out.
So we'll have a limitation on vehicles that we'll bring back, and we can get input from Jacob, unless you want to do a tally on.
Can I say something? So can we? Can, can we have a limitation, but if it exceeds ten, then there's a fee, another three hundred and fifty dollars a year per?
Let, let them figure out and come back to it, okay?
The last one I have on is, we did discuss the non-regular schedule, so you wouldn't have a, somebody that signs up to get their garbage picked up or recycling everything picked up every sing, every Monday. So the question out is, would you like to have a restriction that a customer could not have a regular pickup schedule? So you could, you're saying they could have a regular pickup schedule? Okay, great. Then we'll keep it as is.
Councilors, are we missing anything?
Yeah, I think we are.
And, and, yeah.
One at a time.
So he can, he, he can haul seven days a week, right? But I think if. Well.
No, no hauling on Saturday.
Yeah, but he's bringing, he's bringing it to his place, though, and, and it's more convenient. Yeah, but he's bringing, he's bringing it to his place though and, and it's more convenient for people that work for Saturday and Sunday pickup. I mean, it's just common sense.
Like I said, this is just.
To start. Um, what? But he, I understand it, but if he wanted to, why couldn't he? He has a facility that is not the, the dump. It's right here in Geneva. And it's convenient for Geneva citizens that work, that maybe are doing projects at home on the weekend. They want to remove a pickup truck of whatever and they can call them. If, if, if he chooses to work on Saturday and Sunday, I think is a benefit to the citizens of Geneva.
So Counsel Galanese would like to go back at the five days and make it seven. Would anybody like to agree with the seven days instead of the five? Okay, let's keep moving. Counselor Cameron? Speaking of the mic. Falls within a transfer station. Or are, are we for other contractors being allowed to just bring the construction debris themselves in their own vehicle?
Yeah, anyone can do that now.
It's currently allowed. Okay, good. So that's, that's not an, yeah, okay. That's not an issue then for me then. Anything more missing? Great.
I, I think, if I can just bring up another detail and, um, bouncing off of Frank here. So, um, and I, I thrive on competition, so I'm not, I'm not concerned about that, but I do believe in the fairness thing. Um, you know, we, we, the four haulers do solid waste and construction debris right now. Okay? Um, but the advantage of having a micro hauler tying it into the transfer station. For recycling material is that there's more of a guarantee in this type of operation. That the recycling material actually gets recycled. Whereas there is zero guarantee that you're recycling material right now that's picked up by one of the four haulers. That goes to the landfill. There's no guarantee that any of that material ever gets recycled. So from an environmental standpoint, I, I embrace the idea of recycling material. But also compost material. And, and I, I would endorse the idea of a regular pickup of recycling and compost material. Because that is the savior for environmental health. And as far as the compost material is, nobody is doing that other than, um, other than Blue. Um, I'm having a senior moment here. Jackie Augustine's organization.
Growing cycle and that's allowed now. Compost pickup is allowed. It's not part of this. So that will be able to continue.
Yeah, so, so you know, as far as we, we don't, as far as I know, we don't have a demand for construction debris or solid waste pickup. Because there's no shortage of haulers there. But there is a shortage of haulers, haulers guaranteeing where our recycling goes on the end product. As long as it's limited to the transfer station and also specifically, um, compost material. So I, I don't think this issue was brought up in our prior dialogue.
I, I think it's covered in what we said though. We're, we're gonna allow the micro hauler to do all, everything you just mentioned. Counsel Regan?
Yeah, sorry to keep jabbering on here, but, um, I, I, I do want to just, um, make people aware that there is a change in legislation now. That, uh, from my understanding, it requires large institutional, um, use, uh, disposal of organic. So say probably in Geneva, it would be the school system, the hospital, probably the colleges. It, it does require them to handle their organics in some way. And my understanding is, so Casella will have to take this on. And I think as time goes on, um, that these other issues will also become requirements for these haulers. So they'll probably be facing the same things. But my understanding is Casella is now looking at a facility that's being constructed in Auburn. To handle this organic waste, which, which means, you know, our organic waste is being trucked, you know, unnecessarily that far. So it, it's just kind of a little warning sign when we do have it locally. And to encourage, um, both residences and businesses to, to, to take care of it right here. Um, it's just such a wonderful thing. And to do it all so that you're not like saying, oh, Wednesday's trash day, you know, compost day is Friday. You know, I, I think we have a good solution in our community. I appreciate the changes to be considered in this ordinance. And I hope we can move on to pass it.
So, um, just a question for formalities. Can we pass the first reading of this resolution? Make the changes and then bring it back for the second? Okay. So we have a motion, a second. We've had a ton of discussion. I, I hope everybody understands what I just said though. We've, I got a motion and a second already.
Okay, good.
So, so we're gonna, we're, the vote right now is to pass the resolution. Have staff go back, make the changes and come back with a second reading that fits all our suggested changes. Everybody okay with that? Does that make sense? Counselor Burrow, your thinking?
I just don't remember this process ever in the past. Because I, I'm not sure what we're voting on here because we, we've, 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 we've all agreed to all of these changes. But there's no changes done by amendment until after we're approving the first reading, which we don't approve.
Well, what you're doing is you're keeping the process moving because it takes two readings on the ordinance. And you're allowed to change that ordinance in between the first and second reading. Most of the time we haven't changed one of them, you know, then we tweak them. This is a big tweak. It's just, but it's standard operating procedure for an ordinance change. If you don't like the second reading, we can always table that and ask for more changes. But we're trying to keep the process moving here.
Gotcha.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burrow?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamandra?
Aye.
Counselor Pruitt?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Uh, next we move into new business. This is a resolution authorizing the comptroller to collect tax liens presented by our assistant city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So each year, we have to, uh, re-levy fees onto, uh, property tax bills. For, um, delinquent water sewer payments, uh, code DPW and, um, inspection fees. And so we do this every December. Um, it results in a slight property tax levy increase. Although it, it doesn't change the rate or anything like that because it's specific to, uh, the property owner. Um, there's a long list of all of the properties and fees attached. Um, and just looking for a majority tonight to approve these.
Counselor Camer, are you making a motion? Yeah, I, I did. And I need a second. And I'd like to. Counsel Pruitt and discussion, Counselor Cam. Okay, so you all, I want to direct your attention to, um, my situation. I'm on this list here on page seventy-five. So I just want to know what this experience, what, what's going to happen with the seventy-five. But anyway, I went into City Hall yesterday and tried to pay my water bill. And I was, I'd forgotten it was on my pile. So I was gonna come in and pay the late fee. So the, I don't know what it was. It was about three hundred and twenty-nine bucks, but with a late fee, it was gonna be around three hundred and seventy. And now on this page, it's going to be something like four hundred and ten. So some kind of a, you know, late fee's been added. But what I want to know is, do I, are they, is the city, is the city gonna give me back my check? Say, no, you, you know, you missed the cutoff. So you're, you're, it's gonna be on your tax bill. And then I'm gonna get a tax bill later?
Yeah, so, um, so if, if a payment is received after the, whatever the due date was determined to be. Then the, the payment or the check or whatever you used would be returned to you. And then when you get your property tax bill, you'll see a line on there that'll just say water sewer.
Okay, and it'll have my four hundred and ten dollars?
Yep.
But, um, but I'm, I'm gonna get a proper, property tax bill on a regular cycle or?
Yeah, yeah. It, no, it gets put on your, your normal, it'll be on your twenty-twenty-two tax bill.
Which is, which I get in January?
Comes out in January, yep.
Okay, so that, so that the four-ten, the levy, even though it's gonna be another month late.
No penalty for that.
No penalty for that. So, so the, so let's say, somebody doesn't, okay, so. Then the next tax bill is when?
January twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, so the thing is, is that what if some, what if somebody's late in the middle there? Are you gonna charge five percent or whatever for each of the months all the way to the next year?
So right now, we charge, it, we do water sewer bills on a quarterly basis. And so as soon as it's late, there's a fifteen percent penalty on that bill. And then nothing until the new bill comes out. So we don't do shut offs anymore. Um, so what we do is basically you're allowed throughout the year to pay, hopefully on time. But if not, there's, the only penalty for paying late is that first month fifteen percent. And then by the end of, or by the middle of November, if we haven't, whatever we haven't received for payment, gets put on your tax bill.
So that, so in other words, the next quarter, I pay my bill on time and this one just sits there.
Yeah.
Until the next tax bill comes out at that one shot.
Yep.
Of penalty.
Correct.
So if I just get back into the gear and just keep paying everything on time thereafter.
Mm-hmm.
Then I just reconcile that final thing. That, you know, when, when the next tax.
Yep, exactly.
I just wanted to understand.
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamandra?
Aye.
Counselor Pruitt?
Aye.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burrow?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is a resolution amending the twenty-twenty-one general water and sewer fund budgets presented by our assistant city manager.
Okay, so this is something I talked about, uh, at the beginning of the meeting during the, uh, audit presentation and the replenishment plan. Um, we, we took a look at the, we do this every year. We take a look at the, um, what we originally budgeted for a water sewer transfer. Um, it has to do with a lot of allocation of time and resources. Um, and a lot of times it changes and, and sometimes it doesn't. And in twenty-twenty-one, um, it was determined that it did, it did get altered a little bit based on, um, workload and ongoing projects and things like that. So the original amounts that we were transferring from the water and sewer funds to the general fund. Is going to be less than originally, um, proposed. So what it, what it comes out to is, um, in the water fund, a savings of one hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars. Savings in the sewer fund of one hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars. Um, and then that adds up to two hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollars not going to the general fund. Um, instead, that, that'll be staying in the respective water and sewer funds.
Need a motion? Everybody all at once. Counsel Peeler, second, by Counsel Regan. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamandra?
Aye.
Counselor Pruitt?
Aye.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burrow?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is a resolution classifying capital improvement projects in twenty-twenty-two as type-two actions under our SEAKER. Presented by our city manager.
Great. So when we do a bond, which is your next, um, resolution on the floor. We have to review our capital projects, uh, for our New York State Environmental Quality Review. And so the projects before you can see them up here are all determined as type-two actions with maintenance or repair. Um, so we are saying that there's no further action. I should note that as we get into any of our park projects, uh, we might come back before or do ship a review, uh, for those projects. But, um, for the bond and the initial, um, work is under improvements and repairs.
Need a motion? Counselor Camera, second, by Counselor Galanese. Discussion. Comment, yes. Counselor Camera. Um, I just kind of find that it's, there's one is what is the, the lakefront seawall repairs. Uh, and I just wonder why that's classified as a, a type-two. Isn't it type-two where you just have, you just go through the pro forma and you say there's no significant environmental issues related to it? I think, is that, am I, I'm correct, right? That's what a type-two is?
You are, but let me just clarify. You'll hear it from Adam in a moment with the bond. We've reduced the amount of the seawall so that we can do some of the repairs that we already know of today. That will be a like-for-like repair. Um, and then we will also be doing the design of anything. And if in the design, it triggers more than a substantial maintenance repair, we will be coming back for a full SEAKER.
Okay, so you've got that, Lori?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, okay, so this is a minor first step, almost like a, it repairs something. But it, it also, you learn something from it. Is that correct? So that you can assess, you know, what, what's the level of disturbance and et cetera? And, okay, and that, so we'll have another shot at the additional work. Because you're taking it, uh, this little piece at a time.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamandra?
Aye.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burrow?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Pruitt? Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is a resolution authorizing issuance of bonds for public improvements presented by our assistant city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So as Sage just mentioned, uh, this will be the resolution for the bonding for all the projects, um, that the SEAKER was done for. It's a total of seven point six million in bond anticipation notes. Um, and then of note, the lakefront seawall decreased from three million to five hundred thousand. As this is gonna be the first phase, um, while we get more information and repair what we can now. Um, financially, um, it's gonna add about three hundred, roughly three hundred forty thousand in annual debt service, uh, in twenty-twenty-three. Um, and in twenty-twenty-two, we will be decreasing our total debt service by four hundred twenty-two thousand. So it is a, a net, um, increase, I guess, or I guess a net decrease in expenses. Um, once we get to twenty-twenty-three, which is, um, kind of our internal policy on debt. Um, but this does, uh, capture the entire twenty-twenty-two capital plan.
Need a motion? Counselor Galanese, second by Counselor Peeler. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burrow?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamandra?
Aye.
Counselor Pruitt?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is the first reading of an ordinance approving the City of Geneva's change in the late penalty for water bills presented by Counsel Pruitt.
Thank you. You, you folks might remember that I think it was about a year ago, just before budget, that we first discussed this. And most of us agreed, just as they were raising the rates, that this would be a positive change. Uh, I didn't realize, and I think most of us didn't at the time, that it requires an ordinance change. And so consequently, it's taken quite a while to work through it. But, uh, the skinny on it, if you haven't had a chance to read this, is that we're looking to vote to approve the changing the penalty from fifteen percent. When you're one day late, to changing it to five percent when you're, you know, the first day that you're late after the month. The next month would be another five percent, ramping up to ten. The next month would be fifteen. So it's just smoothing it up a little bit, uh, in terms of the background. Uh, I think one of the reasons why this is important is that, uh, oftentimes landlords get stuck with the bill when people move out. And there's really no reason for them to hurry up and pay their bills. I mean, they, as soon as they get the fifteen percent, they can wait another three, four months, five months before they pay. Uh, probably get their water cut off, but they could probably wait quite a while. And it will help expedite payments if we, uh, if we stratify it a little bit. And it's also better for our, our constituents. So along those lines, the, um, resolution approving the City of Geneva's cha- change in the late penalty for water bills. Reads, whereas the city has recently raised the water and sewer rates substantially, as well as residential taxes through both assessment and the new tax rate for two, or for twenty-twenty-two. And whereas the city's high proportion of citizens below the poverty level are further stressed by the pandemic and delays in the postal service. And so they perceive a fifteen percent penalty for being one day late as being hurtful and demoralizing. And whereas the city has numerous absentee landlords who have trouble learning of renters' late payments in a timely fashion, yet are responsible for the deficits. And whereas after application of the city's current singular penalty, there was lessened incentive to expedite delayed payment since the damage has already been applied. And whereas a variegated penalty would induce earlier payment benefiting the city as well as improved citizen relationship. And whereas the neg, uh, the neg, excuse me, negligible reduction in water bill penalty revenue could be offset and actually enlarged by revising the penalty schedule for late residential taxes. Which probably has to be looked at in the future. Now therefore, be it. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city on January first, twenty twenty-two should revise its late payment penalty for what, for, uh, water sewer bills to the five, ten and twenty, or excuse me, five, ten and fifteen percent respectively, for the successive three months of tardiness capped at the fifteen percent amount. Now, the ordinance that would have to be, uh, authorized, it reads pretty quickly, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Geneva, New York, that city code section three forty-one dash fifteen subdivision C one be amended as follows. The following language shall be substituted for the current language of subs, uh, subdivision one. Effective January first, twenty twenty-two, on all bills not paid on or before the first day of the month, following the date of issue, a five percent penalty will be added. An additional five percent penalty shall be added on the first day of the next month on all bills not paid. And a five percent additional penalty shall be added thereto on the first day of the next month after that. The penalty on unpaid water bills shall be capped thereafter at fifteen percent. So nobody will have to pay more in penalty than they are currently, it'll just be stratified. That's the ordinance that we would have to vote on, and that's my motion is to get the ordinance approved.
Motion on the table, second, and Counselor Salamendra, discussion. Counselor Galanese, Counselor Peeler.
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, Counselor, discussion?
Yeah, it's just a quick, uh, numbers conversation. Um, currently, what is a good ballpark figure of what we bring in from late fees? And secondly, is the, what is this, what is the financial impact ballpark, I understand, uh, of reducing it to this new, uh, platform?
Yeah, so, um, I've got some of that data here. Um, the current, as, as Counselor Pruitt mentioned, the current process, day one, you're late, it's fifteen percent. Um, I will say we are, uh, we will work with people if, depending on their payment history. So, uh, somebody who's, who's late every single quarter, we're not going to really give them the benefit of the doubt. Some people get into a tough situation, we, we take that into consideration. Um, but all that being said, um, we did use to, um, do the penalty similar to what Counselor Pruitt is saying. It wasn't five percent every month. Um, and moving it to the fifteen percent once, um, we did see a pretty significant drop-off in late payments. Now, Counselor Pruitt's point is kind of the cash flows thing, it, it seems like, which is from day two to the next bill, there's no, there's no, uh, reason to pay. There's, there's no reason to, to come in and make your payment because there's no extra penalty. So I understand that. Um, from a financial standpoint, I think, uh, you know, we receive around, I think it's around a hundred thousand, um, a year in water penalty. And that includes, um, you know, every kind of user, um, four quarters worth of bills and then re-levy fees and things like that. Um, so from, from my perspective, from a staff perspective, um, it's certainly, um, less, uh, less trouble on, on, um, us, which isn't any, any reason to, to make a decision. But, um, we do the penalty once, it's, it's, it's a simple process. Um, the one question I did have, uh, Counselor Pruitt was five, are you, are you saying five percent the first month, five percent the second? Or five percent the first month, then ten percent on the total, then fifteen percent on the total? So it, okay. So it wouldn't just be five, three times, it would actually accumulate?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
It's accretive, so, yeah, as soon as they hit ten, it's ten percent on the total amount. When it hits fifteen, it's fifteen on the total.
Gotcha. It's not compounded.
Pardon me?
It's simple. It's, it's simple penalty, not compounded penalty.
In other words, they, they, if they pay within the first month, there's a five percent penalty. If they pay the second month, there's a ten percent penalty. If they don't pay until the third or subsequent months, it's fifteen percent.
Right, but, but it's not compounded in the second and third months.
No.
It's an extra five every month, yeah, okay.
Five, ten, fifty. Yep, right.
Is this just residence or businesses too?
It's all the bills.
Uh, I would prefer if it was just for residents.
Say that again? I didn't hear what she said.
You didn't either. You said it was just for residents?
Mm-hmm, I don't, I don't mind businesses paying the higher penalty.
Would a landlord be considered a business?
Counselor Camera? Um, we, we just, we just looked at this thing, the tax lien collections of water bills that was presented by staff. Staff's been doing this for a long time. I, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm getting confused by all this. I'd like to just stick with what staff recommended, we go with that and not, uh, you know, overlay another thing on top of it. Uh, is, is the counselor recommending forget what he, they're doing and do what you're, you're suggesting? Or you're, are we melding these together? I, I, you know, I, I think there's a lot of things for Adam and Sage to do, and I just think between them, they've been doing, collecting all this stuff for years and everything else, and they've got this body of experience. And they said, let's do this, this way because it might work better, I'm for that. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm not going to vote for this, uh, this, uh, resolution. I don't understand it, and I don't think we should ask staff to do it. Did you go yet?
I did.
Okay, can I get a chance?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, Counselor Pruitt, I, I understand what you're saying. And I like it because it gives an opportunity for somebody to catch up within that three-month period without the, the whack of the fifteen percent. I think one of my questions, and this is for Adam, so once we get to the third month and we accumulate fifteen percent, can that person, similar to the example Counselor Camera can, can they come in and pay that or do they have to wait for that tax bill?
No, the, through the first three quarters of the year, um, it, it all accumulates onto the water sewer bill. So if you're, if you don't pay your first quarter bill or your second quarter bill, and when your third quarter bill comes out in July, it's going to have three quarters worth of water and sewer payments on there. Um, you can still come in and pay that anytime. Um, but then once you hit that middle of November date, it all kind of gets zeroed out, all the water sewer gets zeroed out and gets put on the taxes.
Okay, so it's just that late year that you, you get caught in that situation.
Yeah.
It's gonna end up, okay, thank you. Counselor Peeler?
Yeah, mine's just a quick follow-up because the second part of my question wasn't technically addressed. If, say we get a hundred thousand dollars a year, ballpark in penalties. And so this could be a reduction of up to sixty-six point six percent of that essentially. So we could be losing sixty-six thousand dollars a year in penalty revenue. Um, is that a, an accurate ballpark, so?
Um, I mean, yeah, I guess mathematically, that's, that's how it would work out. I, I, the thing is, is that, you know, there's kind of two ways to, to look at any kind of penalty or interest on something. And it's to make, to increase revenue or to deter behavior. So, s, you know, we did see that this fifteen percent on the, on day one, um, did drop the amount of late payments that we received. However, we don't, we didn't look at data, and I'm, I think we might be able to come up with it on how long it took those people to, or those, uh, property owners to pay after the due date. Um, but I don't have that with me.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Salamendra and Counselor Regan?
Uh, I support this, any break we can give to working-class people in Geneva, I'm really for. I think that if you use your property as a business and you're receiving rent, that it's a little different. And so I would like to see an amendment to this for businesses. I'm not sure if there's support, so I won't offer it, but someone else can feel free to that. Um, that we would still see a penalty if you're making money. But if you're living in your home and you can't afford your water, I believe that you should, um, have a smaller penalty. And so I do support this.
Counselor Regan?
Oh.
I'll, I'll just say, um, yeah, I, I, I'm afraid adding yet another division of the businesses. I understand where you're coming from, but I think that's like, okay, so now we have the three different months and we're adding the bit, you know, it just, to me, it's a little complicated. But the other thing I just want to say, I mean, this may sound pretty hokey, but, um, it's sort of like making a lot of money out of, out of, um, you know, parking fees and, you know, all this kind of thing. I think a lot of people, it's not even that they, there's a lot of people who probably can't afford to pay their water one day. But there are people who just kind of forget and, I don't know, I, 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 um, I think we need revenue from everywhere. But I'd rather see it coming from other places than penalties. And, and I, I do like the idea of, of this overall as a, oh, you made a mistake, you know, so you pay a little less. And in the end, it's, I think it's hard to come up with exactly how that would come out in terms of how much money you make this way versus the other way. It would get people to pay more quickly, I would think. And that, that would be a benefit having the money in place earlier. So, I mean, I, I kind of like it, I, I'm sorry that it would put more work on, uh, on the staff. But, um, I think it's a, it's a positive change.
Counselor Pruitt?
The, the objective is, if you think about it, the mail's moving so slowly now. I, I, I know I, I sent away for tickets that didn't arrive on time. Uh, that happens quite often, the postal service isn't really working that well, and that can happen to a lot of people here. All of a sudden, your mail doesn't arrive, you don't get your bill, and you get whacked by about fifteen dollars. I think water bills go around a hundred bucks. And so that can be really pretty tough on somebody who's really having a hard time making ends meet. So if it's the five, ten and fifteen doesn't meet your interest because there is a reasonable concern that there's extra calculations involved. Maybe it's just delaying the fifteen percent or coming up with a different percentage. Or doing some way to manage this to take the immediate whack. Now, the, i- i- before I get off the comment, I'd like to ask any of you in any of your personal business, if you have to pay a fifteen percent penalty on anything, if you're one day late. And I'd have to say, I don't think you're going to say yes. So I think this is a bit egregious, the way it's currently set up. And so there's got to be some relief in here somehow, if it's not this, what's the better idea?
Counselor Peeler?
I'm done.
If you're one day late on clearing up your credit card bill, depending on your APR, you could be paying far more than fifteen dollars.
Not much more, not without be considering usury fees.
I'm just saying that's an example, right? I mean, there's lots of examples of penalties.
Counselor Camera, I'd like to get to a vote here.
Right.
A- actually, but, but actually, that's not accurate. Your, your credit card bill goes on a daily basis. And it's escalated up on a daily basis with that percentage. It's not on the total bill that you just paid, you don't have to pay. Get a three thousand dollar bill, they'll start allocating a, out, uh, an interest penalty over on a daily basis. They won't say now you owe fifteen percent of everything in your account.
Counselor Camera? Well. Can I give you the last word? Well, I know, I just wonder if, can we have one or the other? In other words, um, we've just gone, we've just got this thing and then we got evidence, you know, the, we saw that everybody that got the fifteen percent thing and everything else. I'd like to ask Adam, if the city, if the counselors want to do this approach, can we get rid of that approach?
We would have to, we have to pick one or the other.
Okay, so that we're not going to overlay stuff on top?
It's either the fifteen percent that we, that we currently have, or what Counselor Pruitt has proposed, or if we come up with something else during a discussion.
Okay, so that.
Yeah, it would be one, because we'd be changing the ordinance, so whatever the ordinance would say would be the.
So can we just, can we just ask him to ask the, ask the, you know, the controller to come up with the ordinance for Counselor Pruitt's approach? Or is this all written out so that it's all completely, it's completely, you can move on this verbiage and everything?
We, we could, after the, the second reading.
Okay, so, okay, so, okay, and this is, this is still a first reading, okay. Then I can support this. Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Pruitt. Counselor Galanese.
Aye.
Counselor Burrow.
Aye.
Counselor Peeler.
Aye.
Counselor Regan.
Aye.
Counselor Camera.
Aye.
Counselor Salamendra.
Aye.
Mayor Valentino.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is a resolution approving the scheduling of rotation of the deputy mayor for the Geneva City Council presented by Counselor Pruitt.
Um, I'm not sure how much to go through the, the brief that these are submitted. But in terms of the red, but resolution approving the scheduling of rotation of the deputy mayor, I was thinking back on this, uh, back when we were first elected. I remember there were, uh, three people in contention for, uh, deputy mayor, two that had asked for the honor and one who had specifically said he didn't want it. He thought it better to be, to go to the, the rookies, which were all of us. Uh, Ken, I thought, was very generous in that respect because he would have been the most logical candidate. And so the two people that had been interested in the, in the position have had a role in it and done a good job. I have to say, as I was watching Counselor Peeler, Deputy Mayor Peeler, uh, and he was running a couple of meetings, it seemed to me like, and I heard you getting direction and learning, it was a good learning process. And also, to be honest, mayor, it takes a little lead off you from time to time to have a little bit of a break. And so I thought in terms of training, experience, and also the honor, the honor of this, it would be helpful to each of the individuals for their own growth. But I thought it'd also be helpful to the mayor and to our sense of decorum, if all of us have to become more familiar with the rules of order, uh, because we're running the show. Now, as you know, I won't be affected by this, but I thought it would be good for all of you. So put the resolution together, approving the scheduling of a rotation of the deputy mayor for the Geneva City Council. Whereas the Geneva City Charter provides for the mayor to appoint a deputy mayor to act in his, her absence or infirmity. And whereas the role is one of respect and honor, but also provides for meaningful experience and learning how to lead the council according to the rules of order and ethics commitment. And whereas such training and experience enables personal organizational development above the level of counselor alone. And that professional acumen would tend to benefit the government. And whereas the current city council already has acknowledged the benefits of rotating the appointment, having done so once. And whereas there's, there was too little time left in this elected term of office to rotate everyone through the role. It is feasible to have captured six of the eight counselors, if starting rotations for six-month periods, beginning January of twenty twenty-two. And whereas the six-month appointments, as assigned by the mayor, can be fully exercised in the next full council term. And there, and therein after, it should become an ongoing policy. However, the mayor's decisions to withhold appointment for cause, or to do so due to counselor declining interest, are to be at his sole discretion. So he still keeps control of this. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Geneva, through the mayor's office, shall have the policy of rotating counselor appointment to deputy mayor for six-month periods with assignment as he or she elects beginning January of twenty twenty-two, and I so motion.
Need a second so we can have discussion. Second, my Counselor Salamendra. So just a couple notes of clarification. Um, the first where I says the mayor, mayor appoints a deputy mayor. That's not how the charter reads. The council appoints the deputy mayor.
Well, we approve your appointment. That's the way I read it, oh, yeah?
Not necessarily. The way the charter reads actually is that the council appoint, at the first, I forget exactly, I got it right here.
Well, I know we had to approve.
The city council shall at the first meeting in each term, elect one of its members as deputy mayor to serve as acting mayor during the absence or disability of the mayor.
None of us got to nominate anybody. We didn't nominate, oh, we were told who, who was going to be and got to vote.
I'm reading from the city charter.
Right, but you didn't follow it then.
The group could say, the good group could say no to any nomination, even, even a nomination for me.
All right.
So I, it's just the semantics of it, I'm not saying no to anything, I'm just saying part of the resolution. The other question is, the resolution doesn't change the city charter. And the recommendation from legal was that it would have to be in the rules of order procedure. And that was under the section three of the powers and duties of the presiding officer. So we would need to add it to the rules of order procedure, that a rotation would be recommended by the council.
E- e- even though we've already started doing that?
I thought at our first meeting.
If we're going to direct a mandate, yes.
I thought at our first meeting, you, you picked Counselor Noon and said that you planned on rotating it.
And what Counselor Pruitt is trying to do is, is make.
Is formalize that.
And I'm saying there's, there's a proper way to solidify it, that's what the rules of order.
Can I, I, and I'm not trying to be, I just need clarity on this. So, so if you were going to do it, why didn't you have to change the charter?
Because the charter simply states.
This charter simply states that at the first meeting, council needs to appoint a deputy mayor. That's all the city charter says.
It doesn't say you have to change it, it doesn't say you can't change it throughout the four-year term. It just says at the first meeting, you have to.
Okay.
So it's just my interpretation, rotation would be good. And I don't disagree with Counselor Pruitt, I'm just saying the procedural, we would have to change the rules of order procedure and add that to it.
Okay.
Okay.
So if, if we like.
So the question is, do we want to do that?
Or you can, you can put it up for vote, I'm just saying, if you want, if we want to solidify it, make it right, it's got to be in the rules of order procedure.
Okay.
Do, do we have to do an amendment to the resolution right now, or could we take a vote and then?
Yeah, I would, I would recommend making an amendment to this by saying, by changing the rules of order procedure under number three. And it would be three C, that we would. And it would be three C, that we would add a rotation every six months.
Okay, I I would, I would authorize that that amendment.
Okay. And we have a second on the amendment, there's a second by Counselor Salamandra. Um, discussion, so there's, there's an amendment to the resolution on the floor. Really what it's doing is just changing the rules of order procedure to rotate every six months the position of deputy mayor.
And the council would pick the deputy mayor every six months, approves that.
Any counselor or the mayor can put a name on it.
Okay.
The council would need to approve. So to change the rules of order procedure, it does take a super majority, so I just want everybody to know that. Any more discussion, Counselor Galanese, Counselor Peeler?
So, whatever that charter says, in times in the past, and you can attest to this, it's been, the council respected the mayor's appointment of deputy mayor, and they carried it through out of respect that that's who he would feel would take his place if council, i- if if he was absent of a day.
Slight correction.
Right?
In, in all my terms, council never voted on the deputy mayor, so they never followed the charter until Counselor D'Amico was appointed by Mayor Elcock. And then subsequently from there. So the charter actually was never followed in in all those years. Counselor Peeler?
That is, that, I was gonna kind of touch on that historical fact. It's always been a, a more or less a tradition in Geneva that during the appointments, when the mayor makes the appointments to the liaisons, that the mayor also uh, puts forward a deputy mayor in that situation. And while we've never voted on it in the past, and we did before, the voting process is actually what's chartered. So, there's a bit of a red herring, or at least a feedback loop in the language of the amendment. And that language is that the council reselects a new deputy mayor. But I think it really is important to, I don't know if I'm suggesting an amendment to the amendment, really, but but it, the council could vote no. So then it won't rotate. You understand? So it's like, this is, I think, I think this is kind of maybe a dog with his tail. And and it might not, it's a, it's a, because there's a prob, the problem is the chartered rules that we have to vote. And the deputy mayor is now a voted council-elected person. So what if the deputy mayor doesn't want to concede the position?
That would be a violation.
If this passed, it would be a violation of the rules of order procedure, which there really isn't any penalty for, but yes. I understand.
Mayor, can I, can I just clarify? There is a time limit, so to get around, you're not changing the charter, so in January of twenty twenty-four, council will have to appoint a deputy mayor. So this is a change of rules of order that you're only dictating during your council term. You're, the mayor will assign rotate. So if I'm reading this correctly, you won't be voting every six months, the mayor will be rotating that position.
So that would, that'll change the charter.
No, so you're not having to change the charter, because the charter says every one time in the, and you did that, and then again, it'll expire sunset. And so January of twenty twenty-four, the council will have to appoint.
Counselor Cameron?
Given all the things that are on our ta, our, you know, on our table, all the things, I, this is, we're just contemplating our navels. Can't we move on? I'm not gonna vote for this. I'm, I'm done, this is busy work.
So what happens to somebody who doesn't want, if if I wanted to be mayor, I would have ran for mayor. I don't want to be deputy mayor, or even have that title. That's not what I wanted to do, but to be forced in a rotation, what if I don't want to be in a rotation?
You'll have an opportunity to vote very shortly. Okay, so I'm gonna call the roll call vote on the amendment, that the resolution as written is modified to add a line to our rules of order procedure. Number three. Where the mayor would appoint a new deputy mayor every six months. Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
Counselor Pruitt?
Aye.
Counselor Galanese?
Nay.
Counselor Burrow?
Nay.
Counselor Peeler?
Nay.
Counselor Regan?
For, this is for the amendment.
Yes.
Aye.
Counselor Camera?
Nay.
Counselor Salamandra?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Now we're gonna call the roll on the resolution.
Defeated.
No, it's defeated. Yep, I'm sorry. I jumped on our city clerks. So next we're calling the, or calling a vote on the original resolution as read.
Counselor Pruitt?
Aye.
Counselor Galanese?
Nay.
Counselor Burrow?
Nay.
Counselor Peeler?
Nay.
Counselor Regan?
Nay.
Counselor Camera?
Nay.
Counselor Salamandra?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Nay.
Motion defeated.
Okay, next on our agenda is a resolution requiring creation, approval, and utilization of official annual goals for governing the city of Geneva by Counselor Pruitt.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you have to say, there's nothing that I will have done since I've been here that's more important to me than seeing if this idea can take hold somehow. Uh, I I really think that that we really bump into ourselves an awful lot. Uh, I I think, you know, we can go back to the early, late forties and early fifties when actually the science of management started, and and the, and it hasn't changed much. Uh, starting meetings with objectives, uh, having objectives for your business, for your government, for everything, is very important. And here, we have an awful lot of people, and I've even here tonight, will express an opinion, but don't have a solution. Uh, they don't really mention the solution. And so really, I I think really what happens with, when you set goals, it really focuses people in a lot better direction. And uh, I have to look at, uh, as I mentioned earlier, our original retreat. We had little post-it notes all over the place, we never drew those thoughts together. I don't think that we gave solid direction to city management. And this last council, or this last retreat, where we're supposed to have three sessions, we only went through two. It got frustrating for everybody, and we just abandoned it. And as far as I can tell, I don't think we set any meaningful goals. There were two people that responded to our city manager's request for what are our goals for the year. One was Ken, who wrote his normal three pages of things, and mine, which had one, one note. And nope, and I think others had submitted things, although they didn't share them with everybody. But that didn't give really solid direction in terms of what the city manager, or the city council's goals were to express to city management for the year. Uh, I know that uh, that Sage in particular, since we do performance reviews on her, made up her own goals. And she submitted those, I don't know how many of you will remember what she put. I do. You're gonna have to vote on it pretty soon. Hopefully you remember, and that's what she was working with. Uh, so I think really, this needs to be formalized. And I think the reason it has to be formalized is more for communication and cohesion between the groups, because it is a, it's a cascading event. Uh, remember what a goal is, a goal has only three elements. And that is that it has to be an end result over a specific period of time, and it has to be measurable. A strategy is what we talk about a lot, and it's in, it's in our, our comprehensive plan and everywhere. The five things in our comprehensive plan are strategies, they're not active steps. A tactic is something that you can physically act, you know, it's an action verb, you can act it out. A strategy, you can't. To say you're gonna penetrate the market, I mean, what does that mean? How do you penetrate? So that's, that's just a general uh, direction. Goals have to be set for city, the city and for city management by city council. By the way, we ought to have our own goals also for ourselves. But that ought to be set, and then in terms of strategies, uh, that should be something that city management and council collaborate on. Can come from either direction. You can come up with the general strategies that you're going to take. Uh, council should not get involved with city management in setting the tactics, the action steps by which they're gonna get our goals and strategies accomplished. That's the micromanaging that I know Counselor Galanese gets concerned about quite a bit. We can't tell them what to do. If we tell them that we want them to increase economic development, they ought to be able to do that uh, through, let's say the strategy would be to approach all the people in New York who have restaurants, and see if we can entice them to come to Geneva to open up a restaurant. Now that's perhaps, uh, her, our goal is to give her a economic development and to bring people from New York City up here, fourteen restaurants, let's say, up here over the next year. Well, that's gonna be somebody, that's gonna be her subordinates' goal to be able to carry that out. How to, uh, Erica would say, well, what do you want me to do? I want you to put together a mailing list to all the restaurants in New York. That becomes her, her tactic, her, her goals, if you will, the things that she has to accomplish. So it's a cascading event, and then you have to go from one year to the next. Every year, we reinvent the wheel. Uh, I was really pleased to see that Adam has started a five-year plan for uh, our budgeting. There's also a five-year capital plan that's been in place forever, I guess, I don't know. And so the five-year plan for budgeting, he did a good job with, it's basically an Excel spreadsheet. And the, and I've heard other people say, we don't want to go through the whole budget and tell every line what's gonna happen. No, you don't have to do that. All you have to do is come up with four or five assumptions. It could be that the, and uh, the uh, inflation rate's gonna be X percent this year, we're gonna add that into year three. Uh, it could be that maybe we're going to become unionized in uh, in city management. And so they put that in there. And you can add these few assumptions in by year, and at least you've got a little bit of an idea where you're heading in the future. Right now, we don't know what our tactics, strategies, and goals are gonna be for twenty twenty-three. If you have a three-year, a five-year plan's pretty aggressive. If there's a three-year plan with strategies and tactics, even though they're exorbitantly assumptive, at least you have some continuity going from one, one direction into another. Think of the DRI, what if that was, uh, when we came in, we decided to say no, no DRI, we could have put the blank, the, you know, we could have stopped all that. That's not appropriate. That would have been inappropriate, inappropriate to say the least. So I think what you want to have in a, in a three-to-five-year plan is continuity from one council to another. And we don't really have that right now. I'm still offended, and pardon me for offending other people, but in the last quarter of the last council session, an awful lot of stuff happened that we're, that we had to work through. A lot of contracts were put in place, the sale of the, the lakefront property, I mean, a lot of things that really happened really quickly right at the end. So it'd be nice if there was some continuity, that we knew that that was coming, and how to carry that through in the future. So, with that as a background, I put together a program, which I hope you'll be able to adopt, uh, to approve adoption of the responsibility of setting official annual goals that are written down and that everybody understands, and that they're widely acknowledged. And if adopted, the mayor would accumulate uh, his or her recommended goals, along with the councils for aggregation into a list of three to five official goals or policies for the, uh, for the city manager to execute that year. Now, Peter Drucker, the father of modern management, always said no more than five goals. If you guys want ten or three pages worth, I I guess, but it's gonna be awfully hard for them to get all of that done. I think just a few goals is all you need to come up with, and that's all we really have to focus on. It could be tax rate, or economic development, or zoning, or or some of the other things that we've been doing. Uh, and I really like the way the mayor did it when he has done it a couple of times with, just recently in one of our executive sessions, and also uh, previously at, at budget time, where he gets everybody's input, and he was able to aggregate it. It's a lot of extra work on his part, but then he's able to come through with what really surfaced to the top. Because you're not gonna get all of us to agree, it should be the most agreeable thing out of the group. And so he does a good job with that, I think that's a good method, tactic, if you will, to continue. Uh, city manager can advise on the establishment of goals and strategies, but should not take the lead in the endeavor. It shouldn't be them who decides what is the direction for the city. That's the only, that's the biggest job that we have. City management should make plans to achieve the goals and seek strategy approval by council, but not requiring tactical approval, as I mentioned. City management should use this format to begin formalizing a three-year rolling operating plan. Now, the provided annual retreat, I've already talked about, so skip over that. I think the four goals cited in the budget book were loose and in specific, and not generally measurable. For example, revenue production, which I think's great, and I think Adam uh, did go into specifics in the budget process, and specifically how he was going to re, increase the revenue. But just listing that, that's a strategy, it's not a tactic, it's not a goal. Uh, so I think in terms of the financial impact, there's really no cost to doing this, other than uh, you know, probably some improvement in efficiency, which would probably have a, a favorable improvement on the bottom line. And uh, the only thing that I attached to this was a sample of goals, strategies, and tactics that was put together two years ago for you folks. And I'm not saying that these are general, you know, that these are uh, it's a format that you'd want to be able to utilize right now. Those goals or strategies or tactics may not be applicable now, but it's put together for an example of the type of format that could be used to to conduct this program. So let's look at the resolution, which is requiring creation, approval, and utilization of official annual goals for governing the city of Geneva. This is whereas the primary responsibility and authority of city council is to set policy, direction, and controls for city management and its operations. And whereas the city provides an early retreat session annually for city council to establish objectives for the year of city management. And whereas establishment of annual objectives at retreat has often been cumbersome, contentious, and loosely elucidated, resulting in deterioration of cohesive planning. And whereas having such presiding goals allows for strategic and tactical development by staff and their subordinates. They need that for their people, including forming budgets and work schedules and their activity. And whereas providing clear goals for city operations improves the attention and dedication to achievement for council members. City management and staff will also providing the benefit of employee professional development, satisfaction, and growth. And whereas, by the time January retreat occurs, the budget has already been set for the year. So any new financial and organizational structural goals, like you're gonna start a new department or something like that, or set a tax rate, that would have to apply to the, the following year's budget process. Uh, and any other goals would apply to the operational management for the current year. So in January, this coming January, I won't be here as you're setting goals, uh, if you're setting a tax goal or a financial goal, you want to start a new department or a new committee, that would probably be put into the following year. Uh, you know, since it, it would, you know, it'd be too, too late to do it for this year. But any uh, tactical or strategic uh, direction that you would want to give to fulfill the goals that are set for this year would be operational throughout the rest of the year. So there's a little bit of a split, a little bit of planning for next year and mostly for this year. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council shall begin officially providing goals or policy for the management of the city resulting from the annual council retreat. Specifically that the mayor shall aggregate all councilor's city management objectives into no more than five official goals as determined by vote of the simple majority, and with performance measurement taken at intervals as desired. I would suggest monthly, that should be, I would really enjoy it if, maybe at one of the work sessions, if we could really review everything that's going on with city managers. And uh, and have a discussion on that, it'd be a great way, like we do with the foundry update or something, to start the work sessions with, you know, a ten-minute discussion on how's things going with our goals. And furthermore, be it resolved that official goals should be qualified only when describing an end result that is measurable over a specific period of time. And that is also recognized that this formal process is foundational to a rolling three-year strategic and tactical planning tool, such as the comptroller has started, and such as is necessary for policy continuity. So I would like to move that we approve this resolution to establish official written goals for city management, and that's the resolution. But I'd also like to say that we should do it for council ourselves, and city management should do it for some of their subordinates as well.
We have a motion, we have a second. Counselor Regan, discussion. Counselor Galanese, and then Counselor Cameron. Counselor Cameron?
Well, I, you're saying that all city councilors should provide their input to all these goals. But what if a counselor doesn't want it?
Oh, your voice isn't heard.
Okay. I, and um, you know, all this stuff in, in front of the resolution itself is all just examples.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, kid.
I'm sorry, all this stuff in the front of it is just examples, you're not stipulating, that's not feedstock for us to work with.
No, as I said, that was two years old, it doesn't apply now.
Okay.
It's just a format.
Okay. So really, um, this is, this is sort of a, an aspirational resolution. It is not hamstringing the style of the city council and the individual members and how they interact with each other or the city manager. It's, it's just saying we should establish some goals, basically. Well, I mean, I think, I think we should document the goals, and, and, okay, so, that's right. So, okay, that's all I want to know.
Further discussion?
Yeah, real quick, um, I love the spirit of this resolution. Measurable goals are important. Um, and I use them regularly in, in my daily life and professional life, right? It's all I have, it's all I have. Um, and 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 that is the proof, like essentially my resume, right? It's my goals and how I've, how I've executed them. Um, I have a bit of a procedural issue with the furthermore in the resolution, which only qualifies the goals after the management comes back with the action tools to measure them, right? To qualify them. So I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that this isn't just a mandate to council, but it's a mandate to staff to qualify them, to make, to ma, to make them official. So what's, what's preventing? Or what, where, where is the latitude of management to do their jobs that may not be, like you said, congruent with previous years or previ, previous initiatives that, that these goals might induce, right? These goals might invoke dropping of old plans, doing things that are unreasonable, right? Because, just because you have a goal, doesn't mean it's appropriate. So, and I know that's what elected body. So, and I know that's what elected bodies do. They, they provide goals and, and that's what they do. But they're, my, my, my real concern is that, is this qualified only when describing an end result that is measurable. Right? And, and as, as an elected body, we, some people who are elected don't necessarily work like this. Like, like Ken said, what if a councillor doesn't want to do it? So I'm, I'm, I'm worried that ingrained into this vernacular is marginal, is marginal dysfunction that can become big, big cracks, that become big chasms. And, uh, that, that's real, that's really it. So if you, if you can respond to any of that, or, or if anyone else wants to develop on that.
Well, you might very well be right, but it, it is this, I mean, MBOs is not a new concept. It's the, the established best practices in, I think, any organization. And, uh, and so I, I have to say it was a long discussion. I'm not sure really what the question was, is, is this encumbering? I mean, I, I would say that city management ought to be involved in the meetings when goals are being set, that they have to, you know, I, I can't say agree to it, but they have to at least subscribe to them. Uh, and, and really if we're not setting goals, what do we do? That is the number one responsibility for city council. I can't think of anything higher on the list of what it is that we're supposed to be doing. We set policy and direction. And if we're not doing that in the form of clear concise goals, that at least in some sort of collaborative way we've agreed on, then we're failing it. I have to say, I, I feel badly for city management. We haven't done our job. We haven't given them the direction I think that they need because we haven't coalesced as a group. We spent so much time arguing with each other and expressing our opinions without any resolution to it, that we haven't really given them good direction. And, uh, and, and, and it's, it's something that we really need to change. This is one way to do it. If there's a better way than Peter Drucker and most of the management people going way back have come up with, I'd, I'd be willing to listen to it as, as the brief says, if you have a better alternative to MBOs, let's do it. But I don't know of one. I don't know of anybody who's brought one up in the last 70 years.
So to, to follow up, that's actually my point, is that when, when, when there is that lack of coalescence and lack of synergy and lack of concert, where does this?
What's your alternative, Bill?
I, I don't, I don't know if I have an alternative, but I do know that the current process to give staff direction and by majority is what we do now. And we do send those in written form to management. And
I don't think so.
Well, it's, it's what, it's what I do. I mean, it's, it's, but I don't, but that to Ken's point, that's, some, some people are emotional people and they don't know how to, and they don't know how to articulate goals in the measurable world that you are living in, which I totally understand.
Any further discussion? Counsel Cameron, then Counsel Salamandra. Ladies first. Counsel Salamandra, then Counsel Cameron.
I, I think it is important that the city manager has clear direction from the council. The council is to provide direction to the city manager. So the latitude that we are wondering, it's like, I, I keep hearing these things like, well, we don't want to formalize that. We don't want to formalize that, but it's already formal. It's just not being followed because some people don't agree with what the majority of council has decided. And so we always get into these, well, let's trust city manager. We should listen to what the old council did, but that's not exactly what this is. We are the council and we need to provide stated, clear, written goals to the city manager regularly. Um, and stop the chaos that is happening now where nothing is clear.
Counsel Cameron, then Counsel Galanese and then Counsel Burrow.
I'm, I'm just, uh, I'm just not sure where I am on all this because, uh, the fact is, is that we did accomplish a bunch of things. You know, in the first two years of this thing, we created a police review board. Um, some of the members of council did not, and, and staff for that matter, did not follow the, the guidance of the five, uh, four vote. I think that the other thing is, is that I don't, I don't want the city manager standing around waiting. I, I haven't, I haven't gotten any goals from city council. I didn't, I, I don't know, you know, uh, spent a lot of time, you know, down on the first floor. I maybe I better get back upstairs, you know, uh, but I, nobody told me to. I want the city manager to cipher all this out and, and serve the people of Geneva. That's it. And there's, there's going to be things like this man's tree. You know, we can all start to re-legislate all the sidewalk and everything else. Cut the tree down and get rid of it and let him fix his sidewalk. I mean, we don't need to legislate this stuff. This is ridiculous. And I don't want to legislate the hell out of what the city manager and the new council or whatever is going to do. What, what I think we have to do is it's on us. And if we're all disagree with each other, then maybe the city manager just feels like, you know what, they can all fight all they want, but there's things that have to be done in the city. I see what they are and I'm going to get them done. And you, you rise and fall with what you decide as a manager. No, no, not yet. So the point is, is though what you do is, is you take cold and you manage. Okay? And that's what you need to do. So I, I'm, I'm against this because I think, John, you're trying to provide a legacy and everything else. And it's all very nice and Mr. Drucker is a wonderful man and, you know, and Japan's a successful country because they followed his rules and all that stuff. This is a legislative body. It's got to figure things out. We've got to get along with each other and, um, we definitely have to be clear. But this didn't just come along, we had to be clear with the city manager. You know, till health, you know, just go back as far as you want. And some councils are more clear than others. But so I, I'm, I'm just, I'm just tired of this, this stuff. I'm getting, this is frustrating to just
You're always tired of anything unless you're the one who brings it up.
I just want to think, Ken, that you do have goals for the city manager and I've heard them from you. So I'm, I don't know why you're opposed to this. Yes, you want her to manage, but you also have goals for her. So I, I
We got Counsel Ga- I got Counsel Galanese and Counsel Burrow.
Getting inappropriate around here.
Counsel Galanese, Counsel Burrow.
I must say, you know, it's, it's discouraging listening to councillors say the majority. Yes, you're right. The majority, you do give direction to city manager, but you ignore the majority of the public of the city.
Well, I mean, we're having a discussion here, so I'm just putting out the facts. These are the facts.
But we have a resolution.
It's the fact.
We have a resolution.
You let a circle and that's all you entertain is a circle.
Let's stick to the resolution on the table, please.
Of the people you know.
Oh, okay.
Counsel Burrow.
Maybe more than you.
Yeah, easy now. I, I, I just, um, think that this is ideal retreat material. And I, I think we should have some official goal setting. Um, our goals, remember, um, can be agreed by, of course, the majority. So we, we have our retreat sessions. Um, we, we agree on what the goals are for one, two, three year period. And this, this formalizes goal setting. And I think, you know, what's wrong with that? Um, and, and I think this is just great. And it's a, it's a jumping off point to actually put some structure into the retreat instead of it being a, a, a work session of complaints.
Right.
It's like, you know, at the end of the day, at the end of the work session, these are the goals that we've all agreed on. And, and that's what we're going to accomplish over this time period. And let's figure out goals that we can measure. So, um, I think this is a great start, um, to, um, to making more progress than perhaps, uh, we, we would have liked to have done in the last two years, uh, devoid of this. So, um, I thank you, Counsel Pruitt. I, I will vote in favor of this.
Counsel Regan.
Uh, yeah, actually I think Counsel Burrow just said what I was about to say. I, I think all this does is formalize it. Thank you, and let's, let's get this vote going.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Pruitt?
Aye.
Counsel Galanese?
Nay.
Counsel Burrow?
Aye.
Counsel Peeler?
Nay.
Counsel Regan?
Aye.
Counsel Camera? Counsel Salamandra?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Nay.
Motion defeated.
Next on the agenda is a resolution adopting creation and utilization of annual performance review for the city of Geneva, but presented by Counsel Pruitt.
I would like to decline to present this resolution since it's meaningless unless there's official goal set. So we can pass over this one and just go to the next.
Okay, the next one is a resolution approving the city of Geneva's change and remuneration for the city councillors presented by Counsel Pruitt.
Okay, uh, as you know, I haven't accepted pay as a city councillor. And I'm in a probably a better position than many to raise this issue. But for $4,000 a year for a councillor, um, that, you know, and after taxes, you're getting roughly around $250 a month, which is not sufficient to overcome the expenses that I think the councillors bear. I mean, if you think of everything from printering to just paper, to gas for your, for your cars, like lunches that you're inviting people out, so many things, I don't see that 250 really covering most of it. I know it hasn't for me, and I have to assume it hasn't for a lot of you. So that being the case, uh, there has not been a, an increase in councillor pay forever. Uh, I want to thank Adam and Sage for really running most of the, my resolutions through uh, our general counsel to make sure that they're, that they were possible to do. Here in this case, we can, we can raise the rates of anybody, the mayor, councillors, anybody on this group, uh, at, at the next, at the next term, two years from now. Can't affect us, but it can affect the next group. If any of you run again, it would affect you then. Uh, I'm assuming that the mayor probably won't after 18 years now of public service. And so, and so I'm not sure if, the, the only thing I had really a little wonder about was I wasn't raising him up here much. And, uh, actually I think, I'm not even sure, yeah, I, I don't think we're raising him up much. Uh, only $500, but there, that may be something that could be altered. And so really we're looking to raise everybody up by $6,000 versus the 4,000, starting January of 2024.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Counsel Salamandra, discussion. Counsel Salamandra, Counsel Regan, Counsel Burrow.
I would like to see more working class people run for council. And it's really impossible to do when you work a third shift without missing work. So, um, I think that for the number of meetings that this council holds, um, in order to, um, have a more, uh, a council that better reflects the, um, economic status of, uh, people here, I think that, um, they need more money to make the time commitment. So I support this.
I believe it's Counsel Regan, then Counsel Burrow.
Yeah, I raised my hand. Um, I, I, you know, I mean, I think this has been stagnant for so long. I, I don't have a problem with it going up. I think going from four to six is, is such a percentage jump. Um, I, I would, I would, well, I, I don't want to propose too many amendments here, but I would, I would say, um, you know, to, to be that specific may be a detriment to me, you know, against this. But, um, I don't know, I, I, it does cost you money to do this and, and I appreciate the compensation we do get. Uh, but it has been the same for a long time. I, I, I could understand an increase. I just would, uh, want to see it perhaps, um, not be quite as drastic.
Counsel Burrow.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to struggle with a 50% um, salary increase for eight of us and a 6% increase for the person that's in charge of us. But anyway, um,
Only in charge of the meetings.
Um, uh, I'm just looking at the historical changes and, you know, uh, the word forever really doesn't apply when we're talking about, uh, it's been like this forever. So when was the last time this was adjusted? I mean, obviously we, or it's before my time.
I think
So
Late 90s, I might have, did you, do you remember?
I've only been here since 2007 and it's been the same.
I think the late 90s is where this, the last adjustment was.
So, yeah, so I mean, I'm, I'm sure there's a reason to have some sort of financial incentive to being elected official. You know, I, I don't want to tie that to expenses because, uh, I don't think any of us ran because of, uh, of what the net, um, wage was going to be, but, um, it, it's probably due for an adjustment. Um, I guess I'm just not quite sure that the adjustment should be as proposed. So, um, I would say every 20 years or so, it might, it might be a good idea to review. So, um, I'm, I'm in favor of making an adjustment, but I'm not sure going from four to six is the, is the right number.
Counsel Camera, then Counsel Galanese.
I'm going to take my cue from, um, what, uh, Counsel Salamandra said. Yeah, I mean, I have expenses and everything else related to this, uh, this, uh, activity. But, uh, uh, I think that, uh, if it's a detriment to other people wanting to serve, uh, who may have less, make, make less than I do or not as well often, I think that that's, uh, in a sense, uh, you know, uh, a discouragement of, for people to, uh, provide, do the time. And it's, it's sort of, uh, um, I don't want to use the word, but it just sets aside this kind of activity from a group of people who we need their voice in city council as much as our own. So I'm going to vote for this.
Counsel Galanese?
I feel uncomfortable talking about this, to be honest with you. Even, even, even if, even if it is for the next, it's, it's just, I don't know. But, um, I just want to know, where did you come up with the increase? You just, based off of how many meetings we, what's that? That's not, that's not what I'm asking. I'm, I'm just asking whether these, like when 10 plugs numbers.
37% of tuition tax, the 90s, up to now, see what, see what that $4,000 will look like. 30 years with the 2, 1, 7% average tuition tax. That $4,000 is a, what, I don't think it's ever affected pay. I think it was mostly, we were, we have offices, it used to be, that are diversified, by the, you know, by the city hall and the, 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 that's what now it's all. So, and I, I can tell you, I spent more than what I would have made. So, so I was thinking, you know, four to six, I pulled it up on the air. You had a better number, great. It's not a real passionate issue to me. I, I thought this would be fairly easy, uh, since it doesn't affect and, um, it doesn't affect you for a couple of years. So if you have a different figure, it might be great that someone should not offer an amendment. If you don't like the amendment at all, you can go to the board.
Yep. Counsel Peeler?
So I've wanted to serve my community for a long time and I had to wait until a certain period in my life until I could do it. And it wasn't about the money. And I knew that this was going to be a net negative experience for my life because you give up some of your life to help those that you serve. Much like having children, you don't live for yourself anymore. So if you're not in a stage in your life that you have the time and the ability to dedicate your soul and your resources to the service project, you're not ready. This is not a compensation because you're not ready for your time of your life. And I hear that from the other side of the aisle, and that's not what this position is for, and it's not what the money is for. So I'm going to vote no for this because this pay was never supposed to be compensatory for your labor lost or your inability to take care of yourself without the position. Okay? And that, when we, we're setting some clear verbiage when we vote for this and the way we're voting for it now, that this is not an adjustment inflation, it's not, it's not, it's not an adjustment, it's something else. So I am, I am not for this and I'm, and I'm, I'm shocked that you would do this as you're leaving.
Counsel Salamandra.
I I know, no solutions. Okay, so basically I resent Counsel Peeler's statements. It is not to make money, but when we hold meetings at seven o'clock. Now, if we held, held the meetings at 10 o'clock in the morning, I wouldn't need to miss work to be here. And neither would food and beverage people who, uh, live here or nurses who work three to 11. It's just because it's not Bill Peeler's time to work. And what you said was incredibly classic.
That's a personal attack.
Yes, it is. It's a personal attack.
I guess it's just your time that we need to be worried about, right?
It was incredibly classic and you should be ashamed of yourself.
I'm not a classist.
Whether or not
All you talk about is class, 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 class.
All right, that's enough, stop. Both of you.
Unbelievable.
The mayor has a comment. I think government is too large. I would like to reduce this council by two and eliminate the councils at large, nothing personal. Cause I think there is three representatives for each ward. And, and I think the most important thing for us is to twerk on staggered terms moving, moving forward. So I appreciate, I appreciate this, but I don't consider it a priority. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Pruitt? Counsel Galanese?
Nay.
Counsel Burrow?
Nay.
Counsel Peeler?
Nay.
Counsel Regan?
Nay because of the amount. I was going to propose an amendment, but everyone's saying it's too late, so I will be quiet.
Counsel Camera?
Aye.
Counsel Salamandra?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Nay.
Motion defeated.
Next on the agenda is a discussion. Do we want to have a discussion at 10:30 at night? Do we mind if we move this to another, another meeting?
I'm ready to.
Please. Thank you. You okay with that?
Yeah, let, let's have the discussion on Conover Street like one of the first new business items because it's, uh, it's
I'm okay with it.
It's, it's been, it was presented to us eons ago.
Okay. So last on our Okay, so last on our agenda, almost last on our agenda is appointments to boards and commissions. Counsel Galanese, do you have those?
Yep. Due to a recent resignation, the. Police Review Board wishes to appoint the alternate Kerry Corin to fill the vacancy. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kerry Corin to the Police Review Board.
We have a second. Counsel Camera. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Galanese?
Aye.
Counsel Burrow?
Aye.
Counsel Peeler?
Aye.
Counsel Regan?
Aye.
Counsel Camera?
Aye.
Counsel Salamandra? Counsel Pruitt? Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Due to a recent resignation, the Police Body Camera Task Force wishes to appoint the alternate James Norwalk to fill the vacancy. I'd like to make a motion to appoint James Norwalk to the Police Body Camera Policy Task Force.
Second. Counsel Burrow. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Galanese?
Aye.
Counsel Burrow?
Aye.
Counsel Peeler?
Aye.
Counsel Regan?
Aye.
Counsel Camera?
Aye.
Counsel Salamandra?
Aye.
Counsel Pruitt? Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I have a question. I, I, I just wanted to make sure you saw me, but you can do what you're doing.
We got one more appointment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
The Zoning Board of Appeals would like to see Andrew Williams to be appointed as the char, or the Chair of the ZBA. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Andrew Williams to the Zoning Board of Appeals as Chairman of the ZBA.
Second. Counsel Regan, clerk, please call the roll.
Can we have discussion?
Yeah, sure.
So did the current Chair leave the position? So we have an opening at the ZBA?
Yes, he did, back.
Okay, so we're, we're taking applicants for the opening. This is just for the Chair.
Yeah, he's, he's actually, he's been a member for quite some time.
I, I, I get it.
Yeah, so there is openings on it.
There is an open, okay. That's, that's fine.
Just a little background, the zoning board appoints it, we verify it. So they, they choose their chairman. Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Galanese?
Aye.
Counsel Burrow?
Aye.
Counsel Peeler?
Aye.
Counsel Regan?
Aye.
Counsel Camera?
Aye.
Counsel Salamandra?
Aye.
Counsel Pruitt? Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I have one public comment person.
Oh, can I, this is. Well, I'm going to make it longer by two minutes.
Counsel Regan.
This is on the, this is on the subject of, of these appointments that we make. I, I did send out an email on this, but I, I'm just curious, the last time the Ethics Review was appointing new seats. All of us were invited for the interview session and my understanding is.
Not all of us.
Well, I don't know.
Except me.
Well, we, I know I, I attended late after a Green Committee meeting and I can remember that and I hear, remember the discussion. And we are, all our voices were included. It's an important board. And I just find it sort of surprising that, that there is a committee selected for this without this becoming an option for other people. At least that's what I understand.
For clarification, there is no committee for appointment. The Chair reached out and asked for members of council, certain members of council to show up.
Certain members of council.
That, that's what happened.
Yeah.
And is that appropriate?
Any other board or commission is done by the liaison. There is no liaison. Is it, I don't know. Is it, is it okay?
I'm asking you.
Listen, the way I look at it, the Ethics Board has come up with a variety of recommendations. And this council, in many times, has rejected those recommendations. So I think it's the Ethics Board's. Total priority to do what they need to do because they are a separate entity. They, they keep us in, they supposedly keep us in check.
Can I explain how I feel about it?
Sure.
Whether or not I'm at a protest, what kind of shirt I'm wearing, all kinds of things that are none of their business. And now that same Ethics Committee has invited the people I don't align with politically to interview their next people. Because someone's resigned because of how obsessed they were with targeting me. So I am concerned that Counsel Regan wasn't invited and that the Chair of the Ethics Board is only reaching out to one side of the aisle. The aisle that they won't hear complaints on. That's a big concern to me. And so I know that we're not supposed to interfere with boards and commissions and I've kept very quiet about the Ethics Board and the way that they harass me. Based on complaints that I don't fill out. I could fill out complaints on so many people and I don't do it. But I have to constantly answer to things that have nothing to do. Did they bring me in for interviews about whether or not I stand for the pledge? Yes. Did they have the right to? No. And so I stopped meeting with them and now they're bringing in four councillors who vote against me. And it's just, I think, out of line. If they're going to show they're political.
Just for clarification, many other councillors have had ethics violations against them. I'd like a motion to. I would like to be asked at this next second Ethics Meeting.
Yeah, I insist on being there.
Do I have a second for a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.